This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Beaton.
Here.
Bergy.
Here.
Kristofferson.
Here.
Emanuel.
Here.
Gregert.
Here.
Kincaid.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
Jeong.
Here. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the Monday, April 23 session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its Monday night session, the council conducts hearings and discussions in which we prepare for our legislative session, which convenes in these chambers tomorrow afternoon at 4 o'clock. We do welcome citizens who are joining us in chambers tonight and wish to thank Valley Mediaworks for recording the meeting for people who cannot attend in person. Viewers can find a recording or a streaming of the meeting at valleymediaworks.org. For those who wish to speak tonight, I'll just briefly review the protocol. We only have two items on our agenda tonight, but as I introduce the first item, it starts with a staff report, and then I will welcome public input, at which time you're free to approach the podium directly in front of us. If you'll begin your comments by stating your name and your address for the public record, and then begin telling us what's on your mind. Sometimes council members have questions about what you have been saying, and so if you, when you're done speaking, if you would just linger at the podium for a minute, it gives me a chance to ask council members if there are questions for you. Our questions just help us understand the point that you're trying to make, perhaps. And I'm not sure if it's germane tonight, but if you don't wish to speak out loud, there are written comment sheets at the back of chambers. They're a blue sheet of paper. You can fill those out and leave it on the table back there. Those will be distributed to council members before tomorrow's meeting, so we can weigh the written comments equally with the spoken comments. Some people have a hard time getting up and speaking, and we understand that, but we still want to make the opportunity for you to have your voice known tonight during our meeting. And if you have any questions or problems during the meeting, Ms. Merle, who sits right here, is happy to help you. With that introduction, we will get going with our first hearing, our only hearing tonight, which is a hearing on an ordinance rezoning property located on the west side of Star Avenue, south of Seymour, from C2 to R3P. Mr. Petrie.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I'm Brian Petrie, one of the associated planners, if you haven't met me before. The property is located on west of Star Avenue, on the west side of Star Avenue, south of Seamer Road. In your packet is the preliminary site plan, shown here on the screen. Also in your packet is a building elevation, shown on the screen, and then also an aerial photograph. Hasbro's LLC is requesting rezoned property, the west side of Star Avenue, south of Seamer Road, from C2 to R3P, and to adopt the general development plan for a 12-unit apartment complex. The entire parcel is being proposed to be rezoned, with the rear portion of the lot to be combined with adjoining parcel to the south of the cemetery. Attached is, in your packet, is the preliminary site plan on the screen, building elevations, and an aerial photograph. The existing zoning of the property is C2 neighborhood commercial. In the 20, at the update of the 2015 comprehensive plan, we designated this as commercial development. Within that, though, commercial development may be considered as residential zoning. The criteria is in your packet. For this request, there is a medical office building to the north, single-family homes to the east and south, railroad tracks, and vacant land to the west. The design of the project is illustrated in the attached preliminary site plan and will be reviewed with the final site plan by the commission if the zoning gets approved. The traffic impact and drainage also will be addressed with the final site plan. For the general development plan, the standards are attached in your packet from the zoning code, and shall be applied for the review of the development plan. The site plan shows a 12-unit building with four one-bed units and eight two-bed units. The site plan shows 12 garages attached, 13 surface parking stalls. The proposed building is two stories, with a footprint of 10,800 square feet. The proposed lot size is 42,180 square feet, and again, the remaining portion will be donated to the cemetery. A certified survey map is required to complete this request. The access on the site plan is shown with a private driveway, a shared private driveway with a neighbor to the north. The site plan also shows a fence with aubrey plantings at five foot from the property line to the south. Staff feels this buffer should be increased to 10 feet from the property line to the whole growth of the evergreen trees. Common open space is 33 percent noted on the site plan. A pedestrian link is shown on the front of the building to the existing sidewalk on Star Avenue. Attached in the report is the engineering report concerning city services for this site. Staff is concerned about the density and scale being compatible to the existing neighborhood, in particular to the south and east, with mostly single-family homes. The council will have to judge if a 12-unit building is apartment building on this property is consistent with these provisions noted in the comprehensive plan, and also the general development plan is consistent with the zoning ordinance attached. If the council does find that it can be compatible and consistent with the comprehensive plan, we would recommend three conditions to be noted on the final site plan: provide a 10-foot wide buffer to the south with a six-foot wood privacy fence, and aubrey plantings. Number two would be to create a CSM for the lot to be sold off in the back, and number three would be compliance with the city engineer's report. The Plan Commission heard this rezoning last Monday at April 16th. The commission voted three in favor, three against, and two abstaining. A protest petition has been filed in opposition of the rezoning. However, staff reviewed it, and it did not meet the 20 percent threshold required by the state law. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie. We'll start, Councilmember Jeong has a question to begin with.
Thank you. I see here you mentioned that there were three Plan Commissioners vote against.
That's correct.
Do you know why? What they...
They did not find the scale and density be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood.
Can you repeat that again?
The three commissioners, they commented, they noted that the scale and density was not consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, in particular the single-family to the south.
Okay, thank you.
Member Strobel?
Thank you, Mr. Petrie. You mentioned a protest petition was filed, but it didn't meet the 20 percent requirement. So are we under a protest petition or not?
We are not, because it was not a valid protest petition. He would have to get at least one or two more signatures on that protest petition to make it valid of a 20 percent.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. On that same topic, just so I know that I fully understand, you mean 20 percent of the neighborhood, or 20 percent of what? What is that rule?
In your packet is noted that Mr. Ivory, the senior planner, noted 20 percent or more of the land within the proposed rezoning, and the area directly opposite there, too. It appears that the protest petition was approximately 7.8 percent of that. So I would assume he would have to at least get one or two more adjacent neighbors to sign.
So, Member Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Petrie, the 3-3-2 vote, that means that the Plan Commission is recommending we don't rezone.
That is my understanding.
Any further questions? I see none. Thank you, Mr. Petrie. Would you mind leaving the, I guess maybe that map is the most helpful? Yep, thank you. Are there members of the public who came to render an opinion about this proposed rezoning tonight? You may approach the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Rod Stetzer. I live in 908 Star Avenue. My land is adjacent to the building development proposal. I come tonight to oppose the plans as written. I challenge this plan on whether it meets the city density rules, its scale, its compatibility with the neighborhood, which is primarily residential. This building would dwarf anything in the area. As far as size, it would add 20 bedrooms into a small parcel, which would be right. As you can see, residential here, residential over here, and residential down here. Oh, very good. Well, thank you. So I agree with Planning Commission member Larson, a former council member, when he questioned its compatibility, this proposal's compatibility with the area, which, again, is predominantly single-family. If this proposal had been scaled back, let's say, two or three condos, or something along those lines, I could see where it would work, but being such a massive scale in that particular parcel, I oppose that. And I guess that's it.
Just see if there are any questions for you, sir, and I see Councilmember Strobel, who sits right over there, has a question for you.
I just have a question for you. It's currently zone C2. Would you prefer to see some type of commercial development there?
Absolutely. I've lived there since June 26, 1992, and a commercial development would not most likely be open 24 hours a day with 20 bedrooms. We're going to have people, in their course of life, getting up at all sorts of hours, leaving at sorts of hours, coming back after the bars close, going off to work, that type of thing. So it's going to be a continuous process. Commercial property, the hours would be more limited. We've lived with the Marshfield Clinic ever since day one in that neighborhood, and had no problems, because their hours, again, are limited, so you don't have that constant influx of people coming and going. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you again, sir.
Thank you for your help.
You may. Anyone else to speak about this proposed rezoning? Anyone else? I see, oh, yep.
I'm Jason Grippendruck from Hasbro's LLC, who is the applicant. I just prepared some meeting notes. If I could have a few minutes of your attention, would be great. I don't know how many of you have actually seen the zoning, the zoning of the parcel. It's actually zoned to the south, it's zoned R2, which is for two-family dwelling, C2, and then we have industrial here. So the way I'm treating this particular parcel is that it's a transitional piece of property, and that's kind of, and I think an R3 zoning, RIM zoning, would be appropriate for the use that we're proposing. It's actually going to be a less intensive use, as we talked about. Some examples of things that could go in there are health clubs, banks, strip centers, office buildings, a small grocery store, dry cleaning business, those are just some examples of what could go there. It's extremely, this site poses a lot of problems and issues, and one of the reasons is because the site is extremely narrow. It's only 140 feet wide, so it makes it really difficult to be able to do anything else with the site, from a development standpoint. And what we're proposing in our site plan is about 42,000 square feet. Under R3 zoning, we would only be required to have 22,000 square feet, so that provides a lot of extra green space and so forth, and plus, we're looking at donating the extra land to Sacred Heart Parish to expand their cemetery someday. We also looked at the possibility of doing a duplex, because I know he alluded to potentially wanting to have something smaller in scale. We looked at all different kinds of scenarios, and it was almost impossible to do anything more than one duplex on the site. And really, the bigger issue becomes is the access to Star Avenue, so hence the reason why we had to have the support of Marshall Clinic to be able to have a joint driveway, a shared driveway agreement with them, which they're in support of. There were some comments from the Planning Commission. One other thing I was going to mention, too, is it's also on a bus line, and also, it's really close to the bike trails, so it provides good access to downtown and some of the other things that Eau Claire has to offer. Some of the comments from the Plan Commission, one in particular was from Jenny Ebert, was parking was a concern. In the site plan, she had raised a question about cars backing in and out of this driveway next to the, out of these garages, next to the driveway, and there's actually 25 feet of space to back up before they even have to access the driveway, so there's ample amount of space for them to maneuver and negotiate to back their cars out of their garages. So that really wouldn't be an issue, and I actually see it better because cars aren't having to directly back up onto Star Avenue, which just poses a higher safety risk, trying to back up where there's moving traffic and so forth. I just brought a building that's very similar. I'm doing a Chippewa right now, I'm building four of these buildings right now, and this is almost identical to what we're looking at doing. The only difference in this building versus the one that we're proposing is that the staff recommended, or they wanted to see, no garages facing Star Avenue, so they wanted, so we basically took the garages and wrapped them on the side of the building, and this is just kind of a side view of what it looks like, so, just to give you an idea, in scale. And as far as the scale of it and height of it, it's actually no higher than a two-story house. It's 26 feet to the top of the roof, so it's not really a three-story building that people might think it might be. I'm trying to think what else I needed. Also, we're providing 25 parking stalls, 12 being attached covered parking, and also 15 surface parking stalls, even though we're only required to have 20 stalls. And we're also very open-minded to incorporate any design aspects the council would like to see into our final design. Anyway, I think I touched on the ingress and egress concerns. It's safer being a shared driveway. The driveway is going to be sheltered from the south property owner, which is on the south of the property. The driveway will be on the north side, and we'll have limited traffic and office hours, so there's really not going to be that much congestion on the driveway because of, because of the limited hours that office has. And last but not least, and I'll wrap this up quickly, is affordable housing in Eau Claire and the Chippewa Valley is becoming more and more of an issue. One of my, one of my goals is just to create more affordable housing, newer affordable housing, because a lot of the new housing that's going up, especially in the compartment world, is being, are rents that are $1,200, $1,300, $1,400 a month rents. All my apartments that I'm building right now are under $1,000 a month. I'm actually serving on, I actually volunteered to serve on the Affordable Housing Initiative that Brendan Pratt has in Cityville, Tuna, because they're seeing a big problem there as well. So those are just some of my comments I wanted to share. I'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you. I see no questions for you, but, oh, Councilmember Gregert.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for being here to answer questions. I have a question about the general development plan, although I know that that'll be finalized more later on. The entrances, I counted 12 entrances to the building. Are those each going to an individual unit?
That is correct. They're private entrances, which tenants really like, because they can enter their units directly from their garages, and they have a private interest for guests as well. So there is no common areas, if you will, inside the building.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Jeong?
Well, thank you. You mentioned about you're going to provide 25 parking stalls, right? Correct?
15 surface parking stalls and 10, or 12, excuse me, 13 surface parking stalls.
Is it going to be in the back or in the front? I'm driving every day in that road, so I think that's kind of narrow.
Yeah, so the parking stalls here are provided in the rear yard, and then the garages are accessed from the side of the building.
On the side of the building?
Yep. So there's a drive aisle here to access the six, I don't know if there's a building elevation in your packet.
Is it decided near the clinics?
Here's a building elevation, so this is what it would look like from the side.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I'll just check one more time. I see no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Tribado. Did anyone else come to speak about this issue? Unlike the Plan Commission, the city council holds its legislative session the next day, so we will not be deliberating and making a decision tonight. It's a little bit different system, so. Okay, the chair will close the public hearing for tonight and bring our attention to a public discussion regarding a lease agreement with 2020 Tambo LLC for a temporary relocation of City Hall at 2020 Prairie Lane during our extensive renovations. Mr. Solberg?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dave Solberg, Engineering Director for the City of Eau Claire. The item before you tonight is the public discussion regarding the lease agreement for temporary quarters during our City Hall renovation project. I'll go over a little bit of the project where we are currently and looking forward to where we'd require the lease agreement. We are underway with our, we're just about wrapping up our exterior renovations of City Hall. For sealing the outside of City Hall, we did some roofing. We tuck-pointed the exterior of City Hall, cleaned 50 years of mold and pollution off of it, and have it shining quite nicely right now. With the exterior City Hall sealed up, so we're not having water intrusions, we're moving forward with the interior renovation of City Hall. The buildings are over 100 years old. The decision was made to occupy the buildings going forward for the center of city government, so the project that we will be embarking on, starting in August, will be renovating the interior of City Hall, so it can hopefully match the exterior. Along with improving the interior, restoring as many historical inclusions as we have that have been buried over the last several years, or several renovations over the past years, we also looked at space needs to try and have the departments organized where they make sense for the 21st century. We're trying to group departments and sections of departments together, so we have a level, the second level, that will be the public level, that'll have the most contact with the public, and then also make sure that every department has the adequate size that they need to conduct their operations. So along with adjusting where departments are going, we are developing floor plans and starting the process moving forward with that. As we're working with the architects, we originally thought we were going to undergo a two-to-three year renovation, with doing one half, and then shifting and doing the other half second in years two to three. The architects identified significant savings if we were to do both halves at once. The savings of doing both halves of City Hall over the course of a year, instead of having it over two or three years, would end up saving an estimated amount of money that is roughly equal to what the rent would cost, and we would need to rent or relocate to a office space, whether it was done in one year, like we're proposing, or if it would be done in two or three years. So making the decision to go forward with a one-year renovation, that requires moving all of City Hall offices to an off-site location. We evaluated sites throughout the city, on the north side, south side, east and west, and in downtown. We looked at the ability to house the entire City Hall staff, to host meetings, the public meetings, all the meetings that are currently held in City Hall. We wanted our site to be able to host all of those if necessary. We also wanted to have functionality. Cost was a big factor, available parking, and public accessibility, whether it be for ADA accessibility, vehicular accessibility, or transit accessibility. There aren't a lot of vacant office spaces in Eau Claire that fit the bill, so no one single spot had everything that we needed. So we narrowed it down to three. The former 3M Building, which is the subject of this lease, up by the Gateway Industrial Park, the Whipfley Building, which is down by Oakwood Mall on the city's south side, they will be moving out of their building into a new office building this summer, and then the Eau Claire County Courthouse in the quarters that used to be housed, are used to house the former jail cells. Those rooms are, have been, all of the jail infrastructure had been removed, and they're wide-open spaces, and they were examined for possible renovation into office space there as well. So weighing all of the factors, we moved forward with recommending the former 3M site in the Gateway Industrial Park. It wasn't the furthest site, nor the closest site, it was in the middle for distance driving. I do have a map here. It's approximately 4.3 miles from current City Hall location here, and an estimated nine-minute travel time. The Whipfley Building was a little over five miles and 11 minutes, and then the Courthouse is right across the river. It has the shortest drive at a little over half a mile, and an estimated three minutes to travel over there by vehicle. When we looked at all of these, the County Courthouse was the closest, it had the most stressed parking, it was the highest cost. The Whipfley Building was certainly a very, very nice office building. It had some, it was a costlier lease than what was, what's being proposed for the building off-site here, well over $100,000, costlier than the site that we're looking at, but it was on a bus, on a transit line, and this, the Gateway is the, the former 3M Building is excellent office space, it has adequate parking, it's very accessible to the public for parking and to enter the building, but it does not lie on a current transit line, but we are working with our transit partners to be able to offer shuttle service for our public meetings that we have out there. This is an aerial view of the former 3M complex. The large boxes on the north and the south are manufacturing areas that are occupied by other tenants. The area that we are proposing is the center part. You have a drive coming off of Prairie Lane, and you can enter with a circular drive that would be the, that would be the customer service area and the main entrance for the public, and there is a secondary entrance for staff, and council meetings are being proposed, and I have a floor plan in this area here, that offers two avenues for entrance, ingress and egress, as well as additional parking in the back for council meetings, and a very straightforward entrance for members of the public attending meetings if they shouldn't be held there. We looked at a number of different factors, and I'll just go through some of the pluses and minuses that we had to weigh with coming out with, this is our recommendation as the preferred location. With transit, we're working with our transit partners to be able to offer service before and after the meetings that would be held out here, whether they're council meetings or commission meetings. For City Hall employees that would potentially use public transit, there is not a large number that have been identified, but we will be reaching out to try and encourage a parking right lot for City Hall employees to park downtown, meet members that have a car, and then drive out here. Trying to go through here, so, and then for the meetings, it would enter, it would leave the transfer center, and it would return to the transfer center before and after each meeting for that. Right now, we feel that that will be a good place to start with, trying to make sure that it's accessible to the public. We are also looking at trying to have downtown, whether it be the fire station or office space that we lease, a customer service counter for City Hall. So it wouldn't be full City Hall staff, the numbers of staff that would be housed downtown would be something that will work with the department directors and city manager, but we would like to have a service station, so a skeleton crew of personnel downtown that, whether it be for housing, to help with members of the public that require housing assistance or potential customer service, with bill payments with a drop box and manning a drop box for that, or helping with electronic payment of bills. Engineering, we handle parking permit requests and encroachments. We're looking right now at having someplace, either in the fire station or someplace that we can rent, so we'll have a presence downtown for a minimal level of service, but also be able to offer information to people who may visit downtown looking for City Hall to provide maps and information on how to get out to our full-service centers. Elections will be housed in the, permanently, as part of the renovation, in the fire station, so elections will remain downtown as currently are being held, especially with the fall election that is coming up. So we also wanted to make sure that we had enough room at any of the locations, and all three locations have the ability to house meetings. This particular location here is able This particular location here is able to accommodate all meetings. We are looking and have taken requests to have some of our smaller board meetings held in downtown. So that is something that we will explore to see if there is a feasible option, you know, whether it be at the RCU headquarters, or at the library, or not real likely at the fire station, but if there is an opportunity to provide a service downtown for those meetings. But we do have the ability to offer all of those at this site. The one thing that we would like to have is a consistent location for those meetings. So for having waterways and parks, it's always at one location. We're not going back and forth to avoid confusion for one of the, one of the options. So this, this option would accommodate that. We did look at other areas to hold regular meetings downtown for council meetings and committee meetings. At the county boardroom, the county boardroom was available, but it is not set up in a manner conducive to holding city council meetings. It's, it has a limited elected official area in front for our situation, and then kind of an awkward seating area behind it. We did explore the former county boardroom that is more set up like this room. That is not available with scheduling conflicts. And then the Eau Claire School District School Boardroom, there were conflicts with that meeting schedule with our plan commission. So we do have an acceptable alternative for our larger meetings at this location, which led to part of the recommendation to move forward with it. It is, you know, almost $200,000 a year less than the next lowest-cost alternative for, for housing temporary quarters. The next lowest cost with the Eau Claire County Courthouse. It's vacant space in the Eau Claire County Courthouse currently, but just to bring the space up to a standard that would make it occupiable for, for office space, this is what the courthouse looks like now. It's just a shell where the cells used to exist. It's very expensive to, to renovate that on a temporary basis for City Hall staff to occupy. And parking, there were concerns with parking at the courthouse for day-to-day business, not so much in the evenings when the, when the business at the courthouse dies down. But during the daytime, parking is stressed for staff and visitors. And it's a little bit inaccessible. These are the former jail quarters, so it's not intuitive. You don't walk in the front door and go into where City Hall would be housed. You go into the elevator, you go up, and there, there are some, somewhat obscure doors for that. So we did weigh that into the accessibility part with the, the proposed location. You would go in there and we would be able to install signs, and it would be very, very, very apparent that it is City Hall on a temporary, temporary basis. You do have a copy of the, I'll go over the floor plan real quickly. This is a, a basic floor plan. And if you rotate it like this, this is the area of the building that we're talking about, and this is the area that we would, that would be leasing. This is the front door that, that corresponds to the circular drive. You'd come in here, customer service would be located. There are conference rooms and restrooms in the front part of the building for meeting with, meeting with the public. You would be able to drop off and then park if there were mobility concerns for dropping mobility impaired personnel at the front door. This is the second entrance for employees that could be used for council meetings. That corresponds to this point right here. You would, you could park, access the sidewalk, go into the front door, and then you have a hallway that goes to, in a meeting area that is larger in square footage than we have currently, and it could be configured such that the furniture that you're sitting at could be installed there. All of the audiovisual equipment in the sightlines to be able to view the city council and for the city council to view the public would be able to be reestablished with slightly more area for public seating. There is an entrance out the back for one point of entrance, ingress and egress. And there is a secondary point of ingress and egress down the hallway to go out the front door with that. Here is a picture. The lower picture is a picture of the public entrance by the circular drive. I apologize, it looks better on paper than in the overhead. But it's a nice drop-off, a very inviting area. We'd be able to install a sign that says City Hall, or some kind of wayfinding to invite residents for that. And here is the secondary entrance that could be used at night for city council meetings. Again, it could be highlighted. There is lighting along the sidewalk. You can park on, you can park right out in front of that door and then quickly enter, and it would be very straightforward for the public to attend the meetings for that. With that, there is a copy of the lease agreement in your packet. The lease terms are in there for rent. It's a pretty, it's a straightforward lease agreement. $21,000 per month for rent for a term of one year, beginning July 1st. We are able to get in in June 1st for a reduced rent to start installing our IS infrastructure and getting ready for City Hall staff to occupy. At the end of one year, we would be able to extend the lease at the same terms that the original 12 months was negotiated at, for an additional six months on a month-to-month basis. Construction is scheduled to start roughly September 1st. Our initial indications are it should be done by Memorial Day of next year. Given the, the historic nature of the buildings, and they're not young buildings, that if we encounter anything that has degraded beyond what we're expecting, that would give us June, July, and August of next year to get everything finished. And I would fully expect that we should be back here by Labor Day of next year, if the time overrun does occur for any kind of unknowns. This lease does offer a, a month-by-month lease instead of an alter lease that we had at Whipley, was at an increased monthly rate if we were to exceed that one-year period. So this is a very, a very conservative lease if we do have a time overrun with City Hall And with that, I can take any questions anybody would have. I think that's pretty much it.
Questions for Mr. Solberg. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. This is a big feat to take on, and definitely additional space is needed. So thank you for all of your work and the colleagues who have gotten us this far. I think my first question is really maybe, maybe it's a basic question. What exactly is a council looking to authorize tomorrow? Is it, and I, I'm looking at the packet now, I understand the lease agreement, so I understand that part. Does it infer then all of these other things, like council meetings shall be held there? Like, does it infer that you will do a shuttle service? You know, what, aside from the lease agreement, what is council authorizing, if anything?
The resolution that will be in the, before you tomorrow is authorizing the city manager to enter into the lease agreement for this. The operational aspects of City Hall where meetings are held, which department goes in which area of the, of the temporary quarters, all of the operational details, we'll be working with the department heads and the city manager to iron those out. I included those for a, for a reference here, that we are able to satisfy all of the service needs that we have with this. But the resolution does not have a "now therefore be it resolved" clause that the council meetings will be here, bus service will be here from this, these lines. Those are the details that we're working to wrap up as a staff level to make sure that we meet the service needs that the public expects.
And may I have a follow-up? Thank you. So with that, would you anticipate, once the, the game plan is thoroughly vetted out, would that come before council? Or if council approves this tomorrow, then we leave it up to staff to figure all of that out?
We certainly have been undergoing a public information campaign with staff to make sure of all the, all of the, to keep staff informed of the options that we're looking at, how we're moving forward with the floor plans. I consider the operations of the city with the elected officials something that is important to this as well. As far as having a resolution spelling out all of the operational details, I don't anticipate having a resolution brought forward for, you know, each, each part of that. But I certainly would in Friday updates, or as a, I don't know if it would be a public discussion, but when we have all the details ironed out, I would not have an issue with, you know, coming back and making the council aware of this and having a discussion, like similar to what I do with the work session for the CIP in January. As well as, we are going to have Facebook and work on the website to make sure that the information gets out to the public, that we are going to be located out here. Because it is going to be, if you, if you don't, it's been in the newspaper, it's been on the, in the media. If you're not into the, you know, paying close attention to the news, and you want to pay your water bill, or you want to come down here, we want to make sure that we get that message out too, either by going onto our website and having a pop-up screen saying, hey, City Hall's moved, here's where it is, and have a copy of this map here. As well as having, you know, working with DEKI and the downtown businesses, and having our customer service station out here to get the word out too. So I don't anticipate having a resolution being brought forward at this point. And certainly we'll work with the city manager and, but this is, I guess we're working through it with our departments to make sure that we are able to fulfill the public's needs for it.
Thank you. Mr. Peters.
Thank you. Just a little bit of clarification. City code designates that where, that the council meetings will meet at City Hall. So to the extent that the lease is approved, and that is what we call City Hall, then it would be designating, you know, that place as the meetings for the city council. In terms of boards and commissions, we, we have a history of moving those from time to time and place, and, you know, we are looking to find, you know, places that would be suitable and appropriate for the different boards and commissions. Which maybe out at the City Hall facility, they might be in some other places. But as Mr. Solberg pointed out, wherever we would put the boards and commissions, we would like that to be, happen on a regular basis so people would get in the habit of going there.
Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. If I could just ask a clarification question, either to Mr. Peters or Mr. Nick. We have met elsewhere, as a city council, budget hearings, those kinds of things. So that is doable, even though code says we need to meet at City Hall?
Mr. Nick.
Sure, happy to. It says council meetings, so I, I think you've periodically held other special meetings elsewhere, which, you know, might not, you know, fall under that. And then the other provision is it does allow you to change it by resolution of council. So either by resolution of council, you can change location or date, your default date, or if there's a state of emergency, it allows either the council president or council manager to call emergency meetings.
Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. If I could ask, the, I'm assuming the amount of money that this contract is for means that this process was done in a competitive, competitive bid?
We didn't bid, but we did get multiple quotes from locations. The County Courthouse was rent-free, but as a condition of that, we had to renovate it. So it wasn't, you know, we looked at the total overall cost, whether it be renovations, running our fiber optic network in, played into some of the costs too, as well as rent. So there was a direct rent comparison between this spot and the Whipley Building. And just for pure rent, without considering any of the other improvements that would be required for it, this was much less costly for that, so. And we did have, I was contacted by a number of different landlords, once they heard that we were looking for a City Hall location, from the Mega Foods on Hastings Way, to Highland Mall, to all over the place, and we had dollar amounts. So we had a pretty good idea of what the rate was going for. And this location was still, for the pure rent portion of it, was lower than many of the other ones that I had seen for that, so.
Other questions? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I have more questions. I'm also happy to ask them if the public wants to speak first before I did.
I think I will take your consideration and allow Councilmember Gregor to ask a question before we move to the public.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Solberg, for your work on this. And obviously, there's a lot of input you've already been taking in from folks that have concerns about transportation, and that's certainly where some of my concerns still lie, but I do appreciate the work that you've been doing. Do you know if this would be something that, and perhaps the city manager could answer this too, could potentially go in front of Transit Commission for discussion? Are the shuttles that, the shuttle services that you've been describing, would those be Eau Claire Transit served, or would that be more of a contracted service? Or I know there's some limitations on what we can do with that, so I wanted to bring it up to.
I did speak with the Transit Manager for what options, you know, we have shuttle service, we want to provide that service, whether it be with an Eau Claire Transit bus, or whether it be with like an ambulance van, or a different type of shuttle with it. So at least with providing service with what we have as a minimum level of service, working with our Transit, our Transit Manager, there is, as you're probably aware, there's a set change that you can have once our routes are approved and our hours per route are approved. So we do have buses. One of, one of the requirements are that we have buses that are purchased with city funds, that don't have federal funds with that. We do have buses that fit that, that need, and we are within that hour limitation of change for our overall route if we provide bus service for an hour before, the hour prior to a meeting starting, and an hour after the meeting starts, without going to the FTA or to the Wisconsin DOT and changing our route map for that. A change that would include, having this as a dedicated route on the transit system like any other route, would exceed that change capacity that we have with our transit service. And, and to get a change like that enacted would require starting those discussions now, and they would be approved late next year. And it was estimated that they would be in effect around May of 2019, and we're looking at being out of there in June of 2019. So it wasn't, that was one option that we explored, you know, as of January 1st, can we just change the route system to get on here? But with the, the parameters with our transit routes, that wasn't a possibility. So we thought that at a minimum, we can get people to meetings, and we can get people away from meetings, we can accommodate some of the service for people that are using our transit system with a service center downtown. If we need to supplement that at some point, there would be other options available. It wouldn't be through the pair transit program, but it would be something along those lines. It's something that we're looking at, and we'd have to look at the budget. But we wanted to establish at least how we could, we could fulfill our business needs with a service center, and our public meeting needs with Eau Claire Transit at this point in time for that.
Okay. Thank you.
As is our custom, we will move to ask the public if there are questions or, or input. I'm not real sure, but we'll, we'll probably need you back, Mr. Solberg. Are there members of the public then who wish to comment on this potential move? Lease, actually, the lease is before us. Anybody? Hey, I don't see any members of the public wishing to comment. Councilmember Emanuel had some more questions.
Thank you. My first question is about the county board location. And you mentioned that the functionality didn't seem to be the right fit for council meetings. I'm having a hard time understanding that when it serves another governing body very well, why wouldn't it serve another governing body just as well? Even if, let's say, council followed, I guess, layout that the county board has of having finance, administrator, in our case, manager, attorney, and the chair.
It operates a little bit different. Here's a, the, the former county boardroom is very similar in layout to our current council chambers. So here is, I'm trying to find the best picture to show. And they have five, I apologize, it doesn't show up quite as, but you have your, your elevated platform up on top here, and then supervisors sit below facing that. And then behind that, you have the, the public. So it would be as though we- as though we had a small group up here and the remaining council members would be sitting in the front here. And then the, the public is behind. So, at least in my five years that I've been with the city, it's a different setup from what people that come to our meetings come to expect where you're standing in front and you're, you're approaching the whole audience like this. So, it functions a little bit different for that. Scheduling wise, the last that we checked, their, their meeting dates are separate from ours. But the, the county board room that I felt would have been a much better alternative, the former county board room wasn't available because of scheduling conflicts. And your furniture that you have here could easily be placed here. And the seating in the room, it's, it's a very similar room to this. But this, this one was not available for use as meetings for that. To be honest, I haven't attended a county board meeting, so I don't know the nuances with that. But at least from when we've talked to other people that have, it seemed like maybe we're a car and they're a pickup truck for how they function, or vice versa.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I have, I have presented at county board meetings before. And I found that in my experience, when I was speaking to the county board, I would, and/or other members of the public, I would go into the front and then I could, it's kind of like, how could we do it? It's kind of like if somebody had an angled desk kind of between our city clerk and our city attorney, so that you could address all of the county board members. And then you can also address the body that was on the elevated platform. So, it seemed to work. And then, you know, it is true that the public would sit behind the elected officials. So, that answers that question. I do have a handful of other questions, but I can yield my microphone to other folks.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Wanted to ask, because there's obviously probably multiple options at the, potentially at the university, at the school board administration building, county board. Was there a conversation with the shared services committee about this issue?
No, we, we reached out to, to the tech schools and we reached out to the county individually. We didn't go to a shared services committee for that. But with our, our different staff that we have that attend meetings throughout the community and similar venues for this, we reached out to see which ones would be appropriate, whether it be a male clinic or at a, you know, even high schools for auditoriums for space. And narrowed it down to existing governmental, because there, there was a desire to have our governmental meeting in another governmental building in downtown for that. That was something that we, we put a lot of weight on. But then we also put weight on safety and accessibility of it. And can we have a space that we could convert into a temporary space that would be, you know, offer the same service that we have here? The Whitley Building had an area that would be convertible like that. And then also the Gore Building. So, that's kind of how we, we narrowed down our choices for consideration.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Solberg, do you have a firm idea of the exact number of city staff that need to, to work out of this temporary City Hall?
Well, if you, I mean, we didn't have seasonal, so it's between 80 and 100 that would be there. It would be reduced slightly depending upon the number of service. At the service center that we would have downtown, we have had requests to have temporary office locations for people that aren't housed here, for police and fire, to have office space out there. So, it's between 80 and 100 that would need housing there.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Mr. Solberg, thank you so much for all of this work. This is such an exciting and ambitious venture. So, thanks so much. One quick question about this county board space that I'm looking at the picture of. And I didn't realize until today that there are TV screens down here that are really convenient to look at. Is it a similar kind of setup in, in that space with, you know, the accessibility to, you know, be able to put on the overhead information for people to see? Do you happen to know offhand or?
I have never, to be honest, I haven't attended a meeting here for that. I don't know if Councilmember Emanuel would be, would be able to help. I know for the, the existing county board room that we did look at, we would be able to reconstruct. And going out, you know, if we went into a location, whether it was the Whitley or the 3M Building, we would take what we have here with us. So, we would try to set this up so the experience that you have with maybe the exceptions of on top, we would have to see if we could mount those for the audience, maybe off to the side or elevated. But we would want to have this infrastructure and the wires going underneath coming up your desk, similar in makeup to what we have currently with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Were you done? No. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. If I may, the, if you could put up the previous picture. There are two very large screens. You can see one on the left, kind of to the right of the flag, to the right of the clock. And then to the very right of the, the seal, I don't know what the right word is, but the emblem in the middle, yep, there's a large screen there as well. So, I have some additional questions about the transportation. So, I like this idea of having this shuttle service run. What happens if somebody is, let's say we have a really long marathon meeting and they can't wait until after the meeting's over to go home? What happens in that event? Or let's say somebody couldn't get here until 7:30 and they've missed their shuttle service beforehand. What types of, I guess, accommodations could be made for people just to make sure they can get to City Hall if they indeed are relying on public transportation?
Well, given the fact that we wouldn't be able to offer, you know, multiple trips before and after if they weren't able to make it, I guess regardless if they have to leave before the meeting is over or they, they aren't able to arrive in time to make it, we would encourage the, the alternate feedback that they are able to give with the blue forms that they can give if they're not comfortable speaking here. Seek alternate modes of transportation out there. But that would, there would be a cost for that, whether, you know, if they weren't able to make the bus, if they were able to take an Uber or take a cab ride out there. Perhaps, you know, we could have, if alternate accommodations are provided, maybe there would be, you know, something with the cab service that would offer a reduced rate. We, we did want to make sure that we had one alternative that would at least satisfy a minimum. And then whatever happens from there would be on top of what we're proposing here. But yeah, if, if, if we're having, I'm sure it wouldn't be an engineering one, but if there is a, a planning meeting that ran late at night and the cutoff, we want to get people back to the transfer center, ideally back to the transfer center, so they could get to the transfer center and take a connection home if they had to. They would probably have to fill out a feedback form. And there would have to be some kind of a notice to say, you know, this is a cutoff for the, the bus time for departure. And then they would have to provide their feedback alternatively at that point, either written at the meeting or with the electronic feedback that you have on the website.
I hear that the new planning director is interested in giving free shuttle services. So, really a team player, I appreciate that. My other question is about perhaps a policy for employees. So, is there a current travel reimbursement policy for employees who travel from one work location to the next? So, let's say I currently work at City Hall and I'm compelled for my job to go to the wastewater treatment plant, even though when I took my job here at City Hall, I knew that this is going to be my work location. I guess what is a travel reimbursement for moving to a different work location?
Mr. Peters?
Sure, thank you. They're, they're paid their actual mileage.
May I have a follow-up?
Uh huh.
Thank you. Is there a plan to reimburse colleagues who are traveling from here to the proposed new City Hall? And is there any policy in place for anybody who might become dependent on transportation that they could be reimbursed for traveling to work, even though it's now, I believe, 1.3 miles off the bus line?
Mr. Peters?
Typically, employees are responsible for getting their own transportation to and from work. And to the extent that this is a different location, this would be much closer for some employees and further for others. And actually, as we've gone through the different site locations, you had people getting very excited when we were talking about one or moving to the other because it's like, oh, that'll be really close for me, or oh, that's further away. So, for some it'll be closer and for some it'll be further away for them to, you know, to, to go to and from work.
Okay. I see no further questions then. And I see no interest from the public in commenting. I believe we've come to an end of, of that public discussion for the evening. And that brings to an end our meeting for tonight. And on a motion by Councilmember Strobel II and by Councilmember Weld, we are adjourned without objection.
Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to meeting.
This meeting of the Eau Claire City Council will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton?
Here.
Bergy?
Here.
Christopherson?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Gregert?
Here.
Kincaid?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
Jean?
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the Tuesday, April 24th Legislative Session of the Eau Claire City Council. We welcome citizens who are joining us in chambers tonight and are grateful to Valley Media Works for streaming and broadcasting these proceedings for people who cannot attend in person. Council has important items on its agenda, so we'll get right to our work. The first order of business is the consent agenda. Do council members have questions or wish to remove an item for separate consideration? On a motion then by Councilmember Tewalt II and by, or Councilmember Weld, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, the consent agenda is moved and discussion is in order. And there being none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Consent agenda is passed. I do have one proclamation today for Arbor Day and would invite Mr. Qualla and Mr. Sotomayor to the podium with their staff if they choose.
Thank you. What would you like me to say? Pound the cattle.
Yeah. This goes to you after. So, what we usually do is read part of the proclamation, or I sort of edit a version of the proclamation. And then you're welcome to say anything that you would like. And then show us the flag. Today, I started out my day today welcoming the, let's see, Wisconsin Academy of Science, Arts, Science, Arts and Letters are holding our local government summit this morning. And Councilmembers Beaton and Gregert were there also. We heard from the chancellor of how, how the university was just designated a tree campus. Is that the right thing? So, we, I, we were happy to hear about sustainability efforts that are shared between the university and the community. And certainly, we have lots to be proud of in, in our efforts thus. And today, as a part of your larger task in managing our urban forests, today we get to celebrate and acknowledge Arbor Day, which is actually a national designation. And we're proud to be a part of it. So, I'll just read part of the proclamation so we can think about the importance of, of this event. And it goes thus, "Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday called Arbor Day was the first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees are a renewable resource. And in our city, they increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business and beautify our community." And my favorite line in the whole proclamation I get to read every year is that trees are indeed a source of joy and spiritual renewal, certainly in our family. Eau Claire has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the past 39 years. And we desire to continue thus its, and to continue our tree planting ways. Therefore, the city council does proclaim April 27, 2018 as Arbor Day in the city of Eau Claire and urges all citizens to plant trees that gladden the heart and promote the well-being of future and present generations."
Thank you.
Gentlemen?
I get the easy part, I just have to read.
For sure. Well, thanks again. Thanks again for another fine year of support for our forestry crew. Just for introduction purposes, we have about, well, only six, I think, today. Josh, yeah, Josh Rasmussen, Lucas Stelter, James Kincaid, Dan Daringer, Mark Ryskevich, Todd and myself, Matt Snoddenmeyer. Luke Kane is another arborist that we do have on staff, but sorely he's in California for two weeks, so he couldn't be here. So, but again, you know, like, we really do appreciate all of the interdepartmental support that we've been garnering the last couple of years, especially with light of Emerald Ashbore kind of upon us. There's a lot of work and we, you know, are a relatively sparse crew. But we certainly try to do the best that we can for our community and at least try to educate and spread the message as well as we can. So, and again, the guy behind me makes a big difference too, so.
I would like to present the Tree City USA flag to be flown over City Hall for this next year to President Kincaid. And again, I'd like to echo some of Matt's thoughts. The folks behind me are, are the, are the folks that lace up their boots, roll up their sleeves and, you know, go to battle on a day-to-day basis. And any success that I may have is due to the folks right behind me. As, as you well know, Emerald Ashbore was discovered in our, our boundary, within our boundaries last November. We were well aware of this, that this was coming. But with your support and over the, over the last several years, I think we're positioned very well to dictate the terms of this battle with this insect as opposed to how we may have had to react to Dutch elm disease some years back. And the, you know, we are, we're on a crusade to plant a, a diverse, robust urban forest here. And I just want to thank you for your support. And again, 39 years, nearly four full decades of, of, you know, the council's support to get this award is, is really something spectacular and something I'm very honored to carry the flag for. Thank you.
We'll continue our work this afternoon with our, our business agenda, which opens with item 22, a resolution. item 22, a resolution authorizing the Children's Museum to conduct the Barstow Street Black Party. Barstow Street Black Party Children's Museum on Sunday, May 6. Mr. Peppinger?
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
The special event application before you is a new event. The Barstow Black Party Children's Museum is a free event sponsored by the Eau Claire Children's Museum and will take place on the 200 block of East Grand Avenue. This event will occur on Sunday, May 6, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., and will coincide with the Eau Claire Marathon. The event will include a sign-making station, get-up-and-go activities for kids, an imagination playground, and inflatables. This is Graham Avenue here, Barstow Street's here, and this is the 200 block. There'll be, this will actually be barricaded off on both ends. There'll be a sign-making station here, imagination playground, and inflatables. This event will require City Council approval due to the event closing down a city street. The Special Events Committee reviewed and recommended approval of this event at their April 11 meeting. Mr. Mike McCormoney is here from the Children's Museum to answer any questions, and as always, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Peppinger. Questions for Mr. Peppinger or the applicant? I see none. Thank you. Then on a resolution by Councilmember Jean, seconded by Councilmember Worthman, item 22 is moved, and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye. And that resolution passes. Item 23 is a resolution authorizing 2017 budget adjustments and year-end budget carryovers for the first quarter of 2018. Mr. Solinger?
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Before you is a resolution authorizing three separate budgetary adjustments or categories of budgetary adjustments. So we have 2017 year-end budget adjustments, 2017 and 2018 year-end budget carryovers, and 2018 first-quarter budget adjustments. So to begin, 2017 year-end budget adjustments are required whenever any of our funds, actual expenditures exceed what was budgeted for that year. They're required whenever any of our general fund-funded departments exceed their budgets for the year, and they're occasionally required for the city to maintain compliance with the Expenditure Restraint Program. As you'll recall, a couple of years ago, there was a sort of a change in the interpretation from the State Department of Revenue with regard to the Expenditure Restraint Program. That's something that we're sort of still working through, clarifying with them. It's something we're only doing once or twice a year, so we only get, you know, a couple of opportunities to touch base with the DOR each year on this kind of change in their interpretation of the statute. So we're still working through that, and as such, there are still occasionally needs for us to adjust the general fund budget to maintain compliance with that program. So our 2017 year-end budget adjustments, we have $276,700 in TID number 6. In 2010, the City Council authorized the termination of this TID. However, there were still several, well, seven years' worth of debt service payments to be made from the TID from prior-year project costs. So this last year, the TID completed its last debt service payment, and under state statutes, once that happens, basically, the surplus of funds left in the fund following that final cost are to be remitted to the other overlying taxing jurisdictions. So that's what we did under state statutes in 2017, and that's why we're requiring that year-end budget adjustment. One of the budget adjustments that we typically bring before council on an annual basis is for our Community Enhancement Fund. The city receives room tax from hotels and motels in the area, and whenever the amount of room tax we receive exceeds what we had anticipated, we ultimately end up remitting more of that room tax back to the local tourism bureau, or in this case, Visit Eau Claire. That's also mandated by the state that we remit 70% of room tax revenues to the local tourism bureau. So whenever our revenues exceed what we anticipate, by definition, our payment we remit out will also exceed what we originally budgeted, so we require a year-end budget adjustment in this fund as well. We're seeking, in a year-end appropriation of $25,200 in our Fairfax Pool Fund. This is related to payroll and payroll costs incurred during the peak season, during the summer months, when, you know, there's more attendance at the pool, and, you know, certain safety and other staffing needs, you know, require sort of peak staffing to meet those peak-season demands. We're also requesting $6,600 in our hazmat fund. This is related to the Wisconsin Emergency Management Grant that was used to purchase hazmat equipment. This is something that the city will receive reimbursement for, but we do require the budget adjustment to cover the expense for the equipment as provided for under the grant. We're also requesting $3,500 in the city cemetery fund. This is for special assessment costs that were assessed against property, I guess, owned by the cemetery or housed in the cemetery fund, assets of the cemetery fund. The city does assess special assessments against itself to the applicable funds, and in this case, the cemetery fund had some in 2017, and we require the budget adjustment as a result of that. And then, as I mentioned before, to maintain ongoing compliance with the Expenditure Restraint Program, we are requesting a reduction in the general fund of $80,000 in consultation with the State Department of Revenue to help us maintain that compliance under the program. This is a program, and I should have mentioned before, this is a program administered by the Department of Revenue. Municipalities across the state receive state aids as a result of maintaining compliance with the program. It's in place to restrict a municipality's growth in its general fund budget to limits provided by the State Department of Revenue on an annual basis. The city of Eau Claire sees about $1.1 million of state aid for maintaining compliance. So next, we'll move on to carryover requests. All my teammates here behind me, if you have any project-specific questions relating to any of the carryovers, they can kind of tag in and help me with answering some of these questions. But very generally speaking, when council appropriates capital budgets, they're categorized into two separate types of programs. We have recurring programs whose funding authority lapses every year. This is going to be for programs that occur with some degree of regularity, like our citywide street and sidewalk improvements, citywide sewer and main replacements and extensions. And then we have non-recurring programs whose spending authority lapses every three years. So these are capital programs that have more of an indefinite start and end date and don't occur with the same regularity that the recurring programs do. When the spending authority lapses, whether it's after every first year or every three years, staff can request carryovers from council for projects or capital programs that are not yet complete. In some limited cases, they haven't started yet, but staff do plan to start those early in the subsequent year, or that we have remaining committed costs for. So we've planned for it, we've executed some type of contract or have a purchase order out there that, we still just have some invoicing or kind of tying the loose ends of that project yet to do, so the funds are committed or encumbered, they just haven't been spent yet. And you can see at the bottom, our carryovers by year. Just a few years ago, we were carrying over a little over $20 million, and that slowly decreased over time, although this year, it did increase by approximately $800,000, but we're kind of keeping it a little more level at this point. We also have operating budget carryovers, and so our operating funds lapse every year, so you're going to see carryover requests from time to time from staff that are really requested for many of the same reasons our capital carryovers are requested. We have some grants or donations that require a use of funds that we plan to do or are in the process of doing that haven't been fully expended yet, or we have a planned or committed use of funds that we still have expenditure needs for. So in this case, the Health Department is requesting $496,900 for various grants and donations. And oftentimes, with the Health Department, they have granting agencies whose fiscal years don't run on the same January to December calendar that ours do, so you'll run into some, I guess, more or less kind of timing discrepancies in that sense. We'll receive grants late in the year when we don't really have enough time to get those spent, so you'll oftentimes see a fairly large amount of carryover requests in this case. And then, we have the lead service line program that's funded out of the general fund, and these were costs that were previously committed to, that we're continuing to expense as, you know, favorable requests from the community come in for use of these funds. So we do still have a balance of approximately $468,800 that we're requesting to be carried over. And then our third category of adjustments we're requesting, these are our sort of regular quarterly adjustments that we'll bring forward. So four times a year, you'll often see requests for grants and donations that weren't originally foreseen during budget preparations, but, you know, may require some use of funds that we'll have to adjust our budget for. In some cases, grants will have language that prohibit the city from supplanting existing funding with the grant, so we'll actually have to adjust our budget in, as a result of that. Or the city requires a use of funds not originally foreseen during budget preparation. So some sort of expenditure came up that wasn't originally foreseen when we were contemplating our budget and going through the budget preparation process, so we'll oftentimes have requests of that nature as well. In this case, we have a request of $169,500 from the Health Department for grants and donations. The Library is requesting an appropriation or budget adjustment of $27,500 for grants and donations, and we have a request for $3,100, which is in our land buildings and equipment capital fund. This is reimbursement that we receive for operations stemming from our forensic lab. This is another one that comes up with some degree of regularity, so the forensic lab will incur some costs that we then receive reimbursement for. That reimbursement is essentially appropriated to fund ongoing expenses out of that capital program. So with that, I will take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Solinger? Would you mind moving your water pitcher? I can't see your light. Thank you. Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. You had a carryover for city buses for a few years that were planned and not purchased. Does that tie into the item that was on the consent agenda for purchasing the buses? Is that, will we draw on those funds then to buy the buses?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And further questions? I see none, Mr. Solinger?
Thank you.
Nice job again. And on a motion by Councilmember Gregert, seconded by Councilmember Bergy, item 23 is moved, discussion. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 24 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with ECHL LLC, doing business as The Lismore, for the installation, operation, and maintenance of exterior signs on the Gibson Street municipal parking ramp. Mr. Solberg?
Good afternoon. The agreement contained in your packet spells out the cost share for installing signs to not only help our parking utility, but also help some of the advertising for a downtown patron. I guess we'll leave it right here. So the agreement covers the installation of these two signs. Currently, there's a Civic Center sign that's located in this location, and what the cost share agreement spells out is each party is responsible for the purchasing of their own signs. The cost of the crane and the installation will be split evenly between the city of Eau Claire and ECHL. The city of Eau Claire will provide the electrical upgrade required for these signs over what is there for the Civic Center, and the city of Eau Claire will pay the electrical charge for these two signs, and the ECHL will, in return for the city paying for the electric on the signs, will do the maintenance and the cleaning and light maintenance of the elevator shafts that are associated with the parking ramp adjacent to the hotel. The estimated cost, electrical cost for the Lismore sign is $15 a month, and the estimated electrical cost for the public parking sign is around $18 a month for the city. They're LED signs, and each party will be responsible for the replacement of their signs at such time in the future if necessary. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions? Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. Mr. Solberg, I know we've been working on this idea for quite a while. I'd like to think it's a win-win for us, and of course, my mind thinks maybe we could have gotten maybe a little more. I mean, I love The Lismore, I love what they've done downtown, but that's a pretty nice spot to put your sign, if I'm The Lismore, and, you know, I think if you rented a billboard in town or on any place, you'd probably, I don't know what you'd pay a month, a thousand bucks a month, so I guess I was sort of hoping that maybe they would have footed the cost of installation and upkeep on those. Did those conversations occur, or didn't we really think about the advertising advantage that they'd have there?
We mostly concentrated on, you know, not the commercial, you know, per-square-foot price of that, but how we could work together to try and share costs to get our sign up at a lower cost. They obviously had an interest in it to have their sign up and for wayfinding to get to the downtown area. As far as the trade-off, $15 a month for the electrical, and our custodial staff makes more than their hourly wages without the benefits, so we are getting a much better benefit for the cleaning and the window washing in the stairwells and the elevator, the wipe-downs of the doors and the walls than the $15 per month that we're paying for the electrical for it. So we didn't try to, you know, hold out for top dollar on it, it was more of a work together for it, I guess.
Could I have a follow-up? And was there any conversation about maybe having them help with the, I know you had talked about a public parking sign on Barstow and Gibson Street as well for the cars coming up and down Barstow?
We haven't gone further out on Barstow Street. That is something that we're looking at with our wayfinding. We did have a budget request that was granted for this year for our parking wayfinding. We haven't gone out on the Barstow. We have a little one, you can't see it, this is referred to as our larger P up here, and then we have a smaller P that we installed on Farwell Street. We did that of our own, our own crews a couple of years ago for that, so we haven't reached out for any additional help with that at this time. As we move forward with our, working with our parking ramps and our surface parking in downtown, we've reached out to Deki, and we probably will be reaching out with any kind of partnerships that the downtown businesses may have too, but as of right now, this is the only thing that we have in the works.
And I see no further questions, and thank you, Mr. Solberg. And a motion, and by Councilmember Christopherson, seconded by Councilmember Strobel. Item 24 is moved, and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 25 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with ECHL for installation, operation, and maintenance of electric vehicle charging stations at the Gibson Street municipal parking ramp. Mr. Solberg?
So again, another agreement with ECHL regarding improvements in the Gibson Street ramp. This particular contract covers the installation of electric vehicle charging stations. This is a Tesla charging station. This is representative of what it would appear like. The proposal installs two Tesla, three electrical vehicle charging stations, I believe, two Tesla and one uniform that would charge multiples that look like this, that isn't brand-specific. So, it would be three stations mounted on the wall in the ramp that would look similar to this. So, ECHL will pay for the capital cost to purchase the charging stations, the cost to install the stations, the cost of the electricity for those, and the maintenance and upkeep. The City of Eau Claire will provide three parking stalls in our ramp for the hotel to use. They will not be blocked off, so they will be available. We won't, they won't have anything that would restrict access to those. And the term of the agreement is until, it's open-ended, until such time as the ramp is basically out of commission, or upon 30 days if we give notice that we would like the chargers removed. So, this will provide a benefit to users of electric vehicles in downtown. We do have the space in the Gibson ramp for the three stalls to be occupied, and it would be little or no cost to the City of Eau Claire, other than just providing those spaces. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Solberg. Councilmember Kristofferson.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Solberg, I'm just curious about vandalism. The security of these are a liability in any way?
There is an indemnification for the city and hold harmless, so our ramp is not covered. And if they are vandalized and need to be replaced or maintained subsequent to that, that would be the responsibility of the ECHL for that.
Thank you.
And further questions? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Will these electric charging stations be given premium parking spots?
They are very close to, I consider every spot in our ramps premium, but the
Me, too.
They are close to the elevators that we have here, so they are very close to the entrance on there. So, proximity-wise, they're premium. They're located on the interior wall. They will be located in conjunction with handicapped accessible parking, but yeah, they're right up front for that.
Thank you. May I have a follow-up, please? Thank you. Will there be signage for folks to find this and know that this is available?
The agreement doesn't cover, like, having signs down in the street, but that would be something that we could include with some of our parking wayfinding on that. I know they will be advertised on your mobile device for charging stations. A Tesla has a network nationwide where you can almost plan your trips around charging for that. But that is something that we could look at, you know, including when we are doing signage upgrades in the ramp for this, so.
And councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. I had a question also about signage. Will they be signed something to the effect of electric vehicles only, or will anyone be able to park in those spaces, like, in case the ramp gets filled to capacity and people decide to park in an electric vehicle location? It seems like most of the time when I see these types of charging locations that they are for only those vehicles, so I just wanted to check on that.
We didn't have any, there wasn't going to be signage for Lismore customers only, you know, so we weren't going to have any restrictive signing associated with it. I think when you see the electric vehicle ports there, I guess it is something to consider if need be, if they're not being utilized by an electric vehicle versus an internal combustion vehicle, to have that. But we were, they were going to be installed, and there weren't going to be further restrictions on those stalls, to start with. But that would be something good to consider.
Okay, thank you.
And further questions? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Regarding the signs, is that something you would look for council directive if the body wanted to take that up tonight, or that's something administratively you all feel that you can do without council taking action?
We do have a wayfinding program that we install signs in downtown. I don't know that I would need a council order to do it. We are trying to improve the service of our parking utility throughout the city, so it would be something that we would consider, as well as any kind of directional, to try and get people around for directions. So, we would, I guess I would commit to look at if we can do it within the framework of our, you know, if there's any ordinances that I'm not aware of that would prohibit that on our own. But I guess if the council wanted to give feedback with the approval of the resolution to explore that, it would be your option.
And, oh, another question?
I have a follow-up, please. I would be, I think it's, to me, it's satisfactory to have administratively look at that, and I would ask that you could follow up in the city manager's update at some point in time, whenever there is a decision point. And if you weren't able to do it, then people on council could decide if it's really that important to take up or not.
Sure.
Thank you.
I know we have with our parking ramps, we've been getting, or parking lots, we've been getting those on Google Maps, and that would be something that we could possibly add to those, too, as well as when you're coming into downtown, an icon would show up if there is one for that in the ramp. So, electronically, it would be out there in addition to the Tesla, so.
And councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Solberg, are any of those three spots handicap accessible?
They're not striped currently for that, so, I mean, they're all of our, all of the spots that are there currently are similar sized at that point in time when they were striped, so.
Okay.
We're not taking an ADA accessible spot and moving it, if that's what the question was.
Yeah, I guess I was kind of wondering about, you know, accessibility, so if someone is in need of a handicap accessible charging station, we might consider making that available.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I don't know what the demographics, if it would, if you'd be under utilizing a spot, if you made one ADA accessible only for electric charging station, as opposed to if they are seldomly used, if people do shy away from those. Naturally, because there is a charging station, there may be one available anyway for that.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I see no further questions. And then, on a motion by councilmember Anderson, seconded by councilmember Emanuel, item 25 is moved, and discussion is in order. Councilmember Strobel?
I just want to say, this one here I'm excited about. I think this is a win-win. I know we got an email, I don't know if the council got it or if it was the downtown businesses, from Mr. Noel, looking for partnerships with businesses to try to get these charging stations in our parking ramps. And I think this is a, it's not just for the hotel people, it's for the public as well. And I know my daughter's got an electric car and so on, pretty excited about it.
And further discussion? There being, councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. I guess it seemed like it might be a good idea to include signage for these. I'm not making a motion, but I just wanted to ask other members if they're interested in supporting a motion to that effect.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't think it's necessary at this point in time. I think if, the city engineer has already indicated that he can communicate back to council, so it's on us to read our city manager update on Fridays. And then, if the news is not satisfactory to anybody, they can address it legislatively at that point.
Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Council President. I also, yeah, I feel that, you know, staff in collaboration with the public and the Lismore can see how this works in the coming weeks and years as well, and see what adjustments may need to be made with signage. So, I'm comfortable with staff working with the public on that.
And further discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We move on to a couple of resolutions about Jeffers Park and exciting development in our city, with item 26, a resolution accepting the bill of sale for the Miracle League Field at Jeffers Park from the Goodwill Industries of North Central Wisconsin.
The City of Eau Claire and the Goodwill Industries of North Central Wisconsin entered into a memorandum of understanding in 2016 to fundraise and build a Miracle League Field at Jeffers Park. Miracle League is a program that allows boys and girls with special needs to enjoy and learn the game of baseball and softball, to improve physical fitness, and gain the many benefits of participation in youth team-sporting activity. In acknowledgement of the terms of the memorandum of understanding, this bill of sale conveys to the City of Eau Claire all of Goodwill's right, title, interests, and end to the facility so that the field facilities shall become the property of the City of Eau Claire, and part of the amenities available to the public at Jeffers Park free and clear of liens and encumbrances created by Goodwill. The amenities that are being handed over to the City of Eau Claire include a field, it's a specialized surface field, fencing, dugouts, scoreboard, restroom and pavilion, bleachers, and a play area. The cost of these amenities totaled $511,783. With us today from the Goodwill Industries is Tim Waverick, Dan Flannery, Amy Sanford, and Nick White. Additionally, we have two of our great ballplayers that played in the inaugural season, Sawyer Staniford and Ryan Spaulding, that would like to come up and say a few words.
I'm Dan Flannery, Vice President of Community Relations for Goodwill, North Central Wisconsin. Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve this community. We have been working at this project for two or three years now, and the kind of support that we've gotten from the community and from the city government at all levels has been nothing short of spectacular. Everyone has been so gracious and so kind with their time, and we think it's a wonderful addition to this community. There's a lot of stuff going on in this community, and we're all aware of that, for the betterment of the citizenry. And when we think of what's going on at Jeffers Park, we get a little emotional about it, but that's because it serves such a wonderful component of the community. So, thank you very much for your support on this.
Thank you, Mr. Flannery.
Nick White was the Capitol Campaign Chair for Miracle League. It was a great honor to work with the city staff on this project. As many of you know, I'm involved in a few organizations in town, but this one holds a special place in my heart. And I want to commend retired city staff member Phil Feber, Don Comte, Todd Chawala, and Jeff Peppinger on all their efforts to help with this field. And as you can imagine, without the donation of the field to our league, the cost would have been considerably larger to get this built in our community. So, we appreciate the support and efforts of the city staff and the city council. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. Tim Waverick, co-chair of the Steering Committee of the Miracle League of the Chippewa Valley. I would like to invite all of you, if you've not been out to Jeffers Park, to see the Miracle League Field, to really get out there and take a look at it. But after that, just know that while the field was the project, the outcome happens on Monday and Wednesday nights at 5:45 and 7:00 p.m. This year, starting on June 11th, when all of our players, and this year we have 106 players, up from 72 registered players last year, growing exponentially in only one year, who will be out there having the opportunity to join their peers in playing organized league sports in our community. This is not an opportunity that was available prior to the Miracle League opening up last June, and to see it is truly something special that I don't think that a lot of decision-makers often get to see the true impact of the decisions that they've made. And so, again, I would invite you on Mondays and Wednesdays, 5:45 and 7:00 p.m., to come out and see what your decisions allowed for some of the most marginalized community members that we have, and see the true impact that it has on their lives. Thank you once again for your support.
No, unless you have any questions for me. Brian is my little buddy, so I'm up playing with him on Mondays and Wednesdays.
Okay, I see no questions for you, and thank you. And on a motion by councilmember Weld, seconded by councilmember Beaton, item 26 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Oh, aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. A related resolution is item 27, approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Eau Claire and the Goodwill Industries of North Central Wisconsin. Mr. Peppinger?
Now that the project is completed, this memorandum of understanding before you is between the City of Eau Claire and Goodwill through its program, the Miracle League of Chippewa Valley, detailing the scheduling and maintenance of the Miracle League Field at Jeffers Park. This MOU covers the terms, scheduling, concession, sales, obligation of the city, obligation of the Goodwill, tournaments and insurance requirements. This is a standard agreement that we get into after projects are completed. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, yeah.
Questions? And I see none, thank you. And on a motion by councilmember Jean, seconded by councilmember Worthman, item 27 is moved, and discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. With item 28, oh, item 28 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with 2020 Tambo LLC for the temporary location of City Hall on 2020 Prairie Lane during renovations. Do councilmembers have questions regarding our presentation last evening? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Solberg, thank you for your information, and I see that you were able to email council this afternoon. Wondering if you can talk a little bit about perhaps the, if there's any cost savings to the 3M building if council met at another location?
We did include in our cost estimate for the temporary location approximately $5,000 to recreate this, to move this and move the AV equipment to the location that we had selected in the floor plan. If the council meetings were held at the, in the current county board meeting room, because the former one is not going to be available, we wouldn't have those setup costs for it, so it would save $5,000. We wouldn't be relinquishing the use of that area to lower the square footage for the lease. was a former cafeteria, so there is a bank of windows in there, and the, your desks and the equipment for the council meetings would be located in one corner of it, and the remaining space would be during business hours would be a location for staff to have their lunches and for break room to eat. So, the council, your, the council, not chambers, but the dais or the area for it, it would be in this location. Chairs for the public would be set here. This would be a permanent setup with the TVs, the audiovisual equipment, the customer can, not customer, but a community television would be set up right here. And then this area during the day would be, would be presumably the tables from the north conference rooms that are able to move, and we would utilize the space during the day. So, if the meetings weren't held here, it would just be additional space for lunch and rollout space and other meetings that we may have that would require a larger area. So, there would be a setup cost that would be saved, but it wouldn't alter the terms of the lease for the total bottom dollars for that.
Thank you, Madam President. I noted in the email that it seems like a counter offer was made, I don't know if that's the right word, so please don't quote me on that one, but a discussion was made with the county on could they match renovation costs to what the leases out of the 3M building, and that the city had not heard back. Do you know if there was a date that you were anticipating to hear back from the county?
Soon, you know, anytime between now and, there is a number of different boards that the county administrator needs to work through for that proposal, but yeah, anticipating the question of, when we were looking at sites, you know, for cost, because the cost to renovate the county courthouse was, the former jail cells at the county courthouse was about twice what our lease cost was for here, so that helped really drive us into recommending 3M for a location. So, what if it didn't cost anymore, what would happen there? As far as functionality and setup, the 3M site is probably better set up, it's an office space as opposed to a former jail area for it, but you know, recognizing the proximity to downtown for the courthouse is closer, it's on a transit line, this has more available parking for staff, there are pluses and minuses for both sites. But the overall bottom cost of it was, you know, one of the factors that weighed heavily in our recommendation for it. So, I don't have an answer back from them if that's one, if that portion of the equation would be something that would be available to them. Their capital budget was approved last year prior to us even entering the talks with them, so a couple hundred thousand dollars extra for them is, it would be a big ask if somebody approached the city for that. So, I don't have any news to say that yea or nay that that would be an option, but if it was the same cost, there are still some advantages that we see, you know, staff-wise and functioning, that this building would have over the courthouse, but the courthouse has a few advantages also with, primarily with location, so.
Thank you. Mr. Peters.
Thank you, if I could just augment a little bit to that in terms of that functionality and things that went into the decision to recommend the Prairie Lane. Parking for employees is, would be challenging, they have 90 more parking places available at the courthouse, and as well as parking for people who would be coming to provide services, so we have contractors and things that right now can park and walk into the building. There, the space we would be in is at the end of a long hall up on the third floor, and so for people that are looking to find us from a service perspective, they'd have to park, you know, first off, find parking, and then go up to the three floors and find us at the end of the hallway. Other things that might be a little more subtle, the design of that hallway in terms of bathrooms and break rooms is for the current facilities, and adding 90 more people to basically one set of bathrooms and one little break room could be a little challenging. And this facility on Prairie Lane, many of the offices are already furnished, and we'll be able to move into those and have furnished offices. We would have to provide all of the furnishings and furniture to go to the courthouse. So, those are other factors that would go into it, but certainly it's a policy decision, you know, from the council, and we would, we'll work with whatever your decision is.
Any further questions? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to get some clarification about remote services. I know we touched on that, and I apologize, I didn't have a chance to see your email this afternoon, but I've spoken with a constituent who's really concerned about, you know, housing and other kinds of services that constituents would need to have access to, and we talked a little bit yesterday about having some skeleton staff here, so if you could clarify that a little bit for me.
Sure. We, with the move out of the downtown area, we, you know, whether it was the Whitley site or this site, we did want to have some kind of a service center downtown just to have a presence. Deki has an interest in being downtown with, you know, the downtown businesses, Housing has a lot of their constituency, uses transit to access their offices, and they get off the transfer center and they want to be close to that, as well as customer service, you know, whether paying a bill or having a drop box where they could, people could drop off and having staff to monitor, you know, drop off the payments. In engineering, we have parking renewals and encroachments. So, that is something that we are exploring, whether it's one person or three people or five people. We're going to be working with our department heads to see which departments have a need to do that, and how we can cross-train staff to provide the services, you know, basic level of service that we would need with the minimal staff downtown for that. Some elections will be downtown regardless, so that's one, that's one function that we have that will remain downtown. We're looking at the fire station, some first-floor space on the fire station, we have an ADA-accessible entrance and some parking that's right outside. If we can, if that doesn't work out for appropriate space, then we'll look at vacant office space in the downtown area in proximity to City Hall, whether it be at the US Bank Building or the Bank Mutual Building or 7 South Dewey. So, that is something that we want to offer, at least a base level to do some services, but also act as an information desk to either pick up a phone and call staff at the temporary location, or give them directions on, if they're coming for council meeting, go over to the transfer center, get on a bus, and you'll be brought out there for the meetings. So, that's where we are at with it right now, so.
Thank you. And I see no further questions. Thank you.
I have one more.
Oh, Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Solberg, just to amplify on that response, I don't want this to sound like a pushy thing, but for the public that is going to anticipate this being inconvenient for them, do you have some idea when you might, do you have a target date for when that service center might be nailed down and that information would go out to the public?
I would say before June. I'd say, we're almost in May, so over the next, you know, three to six weeks or so, we'll be finalizing. We will be submitting plans to Madison for approval this summer and then hope to be under construction at the latter part of the summer. Our lease would go into effect as of July 1st, so we're very close to being on the cusp, so we're hoping to finalize those details, you know, in the near future as opposed to waiting towards the end of the summer, or after we move and then come back down. We want to make sure we have that ironed out ahead of time.
So, you're thinking like four weeks ahead of the move, you'd be talking about the temporary plans, maybe?
Yes, I'd like to, you know, for personal goal, have the details worked out in May for that. We're looking at moving in July for that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and thank you again. And as is our custom, we are around to a motion by Councilmember Bergy on this item? Just say yes. Doesn't mean you have to vote for it, we just need somebody to get it moved. And seconded by Councilmember Christopherson. And that makes the item available for discussion, this resolution item, and discussion is before us. Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Mr. Solberg, Mr. Peters and city staff for working on these, I was going to say options, but I think it's kind of been clear that this is the direction that we're moving in. I think one of the things that has concerned me a little bit is that this has felt a little bit like it's a foregone conclusion that we're going out to this site, and we have done other, made other decisions in the past where we have looked at sort of pros and cons, and how do we feel this would impact the citizens, how does this impact the city, how does this impact staff? I think we could have done a little bit more pro and con leading up to this point, and maybe folks disagree with me on that, but that's, as a council member, it kind of feels like we've moved ahead. One of the things that I think is unfortunate is the opportunity that we may have missed, knowing that the city, sorry, that the county board is going to sink in potentially half million dollars to renovate that space over in the courthouse. I wish, I think we're probably past that point, but I wish there might have been some way to work intergovernmentally, you know, between us to figure out a way to save taxpayer money, to save public money. And shared services is an idea that I brought up last night, could have been a perfect commission to sort of bring folks together to say what could work. You know, I understand, again, it's late date, so the savings can't be realized, but I think that's also an opportunity that we may, we may have explored. So, while I think this is going to be, you know, it's for a year, we just got to get through the year, you know, I think going forward into the future, I'd like to see a little bit more, some sort of options that we can say, pros and cons, here's what's good, here's what's not. Fire station was an example of that, and just to give us a little bit more positive input into the process, so, thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. Thanks to Mr. Solberg for his work on this and other staff. I just wanted to quickly echo the sentiment of Councilmember Worthman. I also am definitely intrigued in the possibility of partnering with the county to, you know, spend our tax dollars wisely, and to partnering with them for this, for this year. I had actually been considering postponement, just so you can look more into this, but thanks to the email that Mr. Solberg sent out right before this meeting, I, I think that maybe this, from what I can tell right now, I think that maybe the 3M building at this point in time is a little bit more of a viable option, and so I thank Mr. Solberg for helping me make that decision, or helping me get there at least. I do have some concern about the accessibility to county council meetings for the public and the fact that the 3M site is not on a bus transit line, so that's still something that I'm kind of, that's not sitting quite well with me, so.
And further discussion? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. This is maybe a question I can, see if I can get clarified if that would be permitted. Thank you. In Mr. Solberg's letter, he indicated that while the county had not said yea or nay just yet, that answer could be coming soon. So, what happens if this body said, let's wait two weeks? Do you think you'd have an answer then, and/or do you lose anything with the tentative agreement with 3M?
Um.
Or Tambo, excuse me?
I don't want to speak for the county's process, but I, it seemed like we would have a good likelihood of an indication within a couple of weeks for the county. As far as the agreement with Tambo, I'm not sure in the fine print if there was a date that had to be accepted by. With that, I don't believe that there was. So, but again, with the, the cost is one portion of it, and it was certainly a consideration that we looked at when we looked at sites of, you know, putting money into something that we would have an asset when we're done as opposed to rent, that there wouldn't be anything less for that. But there are another number of different considerations that go into it as well, so, yeah, if there was a decision to hold off on it, I don't think that it would scrap the agreement with Tambo. You would obviously have a higher likelihood of a decision from the county than we do right now, you know, short of somebody coming into the meeting, but I wouldn't be able to guarantee that we would have a confirmation within two weeks. There was a number of process points that the county executive would have to go through to broach the subject with that. I'm not sure with their, with their budget, with their budgeting process, how long that would take with their appropriating funds that weren't previously appropriated for it, but those were discussions that we had with them.
Thank you. And Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to amend item number 28, and I'll pass it out, but essentially what it is, is a motion to say that we would like to use for council meetings, the county board chamber.
I'll second.
Thanks.
Do you have one? Motion has been offered and seconded to amend their resolution by, let's see, to further resolve that blah, 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 the location of any and all council meetings as can be accommodated by the Eau Claire County be held in the county boardroom during the time City Hall is relocated. Councilmember Worthman, to your motion.
Thank you, Council President. So, a number of ideas here, one being, and I think folks kind of recognize that the reason, you know, county board, city council, school board meet in downtown locations is because it creates a level of accessibility for folks. The other thing is the fact that we don't have to pay additional rent likely, that hasn't been affirmed, but it appears that that's something that might be open to us without an additional rent. Furthermore, what I think is important about this too, is the fact that, you know, it is, the 3M site does not have a current bus line, it is a little less accessible in terms of folks who may be bicycling, may be walking, and I think that's important. I think on top of it is the fact that that site is already set up, and there's a savings to be realized there as well. While the configuration of the county board may be slightly different, clearly it works for the county board, it has for many, many years, and, you know, it would probably be something to get used to a little bit, but I think, given that it's only a year's time, we can make important decisions in that same chamber as they do. So, I hope you would consider supporting this amendment to the resolution we're considering.
Further discussion on the motion? Oh, Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I share that sentiment. I can tell that city staff has looked at viable options for transportation to the 3M site, but I think that, you know, as we see people in our meetings coming and going all the time, I think that a shuttle to the meeting and one shuttle after the meeting is not something that I think is going to work for our citizens, or not all of our citizens at least. And I think that, you know, though the county boardroom isn't set up the same way as ours is, I think that for a year, gaining that accessibility is something that's a lot more important, to me at least, and so, thank you, Councilmember Worthman, for offering this amendment.
And further discussion? Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. Councilmember Worthman, I appreciate that. I don't think I'll be able to support it at this time, because I just didn't like the county boardroom for having our meetings, and I guess I also feel a little bit that if this group wanted to give staff direction and say that we would like to find a location near the city center to hold the council meetings, that's one thing, but picking a spot, I would prefer to not do that, you know, so I mean, there's a lot of other viable spots if we wanted to give that direction that I think we could probably find just for the council meetings. And then again, if we do that, then I have to consider, okay, well, now is the 3M building the best spot for everything else, because I think that building was probably, the parameters that they put forth was sort of to find a place that could function as a council chamber as well, so now... So now, if we aren't doing that, then, then maybe we need to reconsider the office space as well. So, you know, it's, it's a one-year period of time. It's a sacrifice. I walk, I walk here, I'm not gonna enjoy it. But, you know, I guess I won't be able to support that.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I will be voting in support of this for a handful of reasons. I think the biggest reason for me is that while I can appreciate that change has to happen for at least a year, and it would have been longer if not a potential solution on the table, so I accept that change has to happen. What is a deal breaker for me is participating in public meetings that, for many people, are inaccessible. I think about in the wintertime when it's snowy and walking over a mile on the snow, you gotta have some real dedication to the city council to do that, and I, I just think it's too much of a barrier. I feel that having our public meetings in a downtown location is a good idea. I actually had reviewed some site selection criteria for other local government bodies on how did they pick where they were going to build their government building, and time and time again, it was in a central part of their community. And so while I appreciate that the space is available, I think for me, I would need to, I really would prefer to see a place that's more accessible to citizens. As far as the configurations go, I think it's opened up a good discussion for council, and I know council will, I hope, will have an opportunity to weigh in on what the new layout will be in the new council chambers. But here, we have a different layout, and so I was thinking about, okay, what are the other local government offices that I'm familiar with? And for sure, in, in four counties, including Eau Claire, the room configurations are the exact same as the county board in Eau Claire, meaning some folks at the front, and then county board members kind of facing the front, and then citizens either around or behind with different speaking apparatuses and viewing devices for people to see. So I know it can work, because it works in at least four different areas, aside from our chambers. So I, I think it's worth pursuing.
And further discussion? Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Council President. I, I, as much as I would like to support the amendment, I, you know, obviously ideally the best place for, for a temporary city hall is downtown and close to everything else that's happening here, but because we don't have that option, because staff supports the 3M building, and I guess I, we've entrusted our city manager to, to make these decisions, and he has entrusted his, his department heads and his staff, and their staff, to, to make decisions that fulfill what we've asked of them, and that's to meet the needs of the city. And, and right now, it appears that this is the building that, that meets those demands and, and meets those needs. You know, and again, not perfectly, and not ideally, but, but the best that we can, we can supply at this moment. I, I think it's advantageous to us to have staff at our council meetings, both on Monday for the public hearings and Tuesday for the legislative. Obviously, they will still be there, but maybe not all the information that we need or to have at hand is not going to be as, as convenient. I agree with Commissioner Strobel. I'm not a big fan of the, of the county boardroom. You know, the idea of that in other counties around our area is that they have, in Eau Claire anyway, they have 29 commissioners. So obviously, we can't have a setup like this where we can all face out to the public and speak, because to get 29 people all in front, it would be really difficult, in addition to the, to the, to the legislative body, the, the heads of those, the county board chair and so on. So I, I think it's uninviting when you go into that room. I don't think it's very, very welcoming at all. I think difficult for us to, when we're speaking away from the public. Right now, I think we all enjoy this. We'd be able to look face to face and be able to talk and have interaction and discussion face to face. And I think that's, that's a big part of the public hearing, and making sure that we have that ability is, I think, crucial, just to maintain some continuity to what already is gonna be a huge change for our community with, with the relocation of this. So I think with all that, I, I trust that we will find a way to get people there. I think the other thing that we need to think about is, public hearings encompass the entire city. I mean, we have agenda items on our public hearings that are for items on the west side and the south side, and out in Princeton Valley, and out and behind Coles, and, I mean, at the far reaches of Eau Claire. And downtown isn't always the most convenient location for all of those people to get to. So there is give and take, you know, for our citizens to get to where they need to be to be a part of our public hearings. And right now, this is, you know, the best option, fiscally, too. I think we need to really make sure that we, we are being smart with the cost of making this work. And I, I just think it makes sense. And if, and if staff is, is supporting it, and this is what staff wants and feels is necessary, then, then I support that.
Councilmember Christopherson?
I'm, I need to have some clarification, Madam President. In the conversation, I've become a little unclear. I really like this facility for the staff use, and the parking, and all of the, the fact that we don't have to equip offices. But I'm not, there, there would be a savings of $5,000 if we didn't hold the meetings there. So my, my question becomes, what inconvenience is it to staff to equip a meeting that happens off-site? Is, is there something significant for that? And my second question then would be, last night in the presentation, I heard Mr. Solberg, or the implication I heard from Mr. Solberg's comments was he didn't think we would like the arrangement. Is there something about the staff's interest in the county board space that makes it less appealing for preparation?
Mr. Peters?
Sure, thank you. On the first point, in terms of mobilizing to go to a meeting that's in another site, we would certainly do the best we could to bring what we need and materials. I, I do think there's, so there's not a significant, you know, deterrent to that. There are times when you'll see staff that leaves the room because there's a question, there's an issue, and, you know, they're able to go to their office and find what they need to, to be able to, to be responsive. How often that would happen, how significant that would be, it's hard to, you know, hard to, to, you know, to, to gauge, you know, that, that piece of it. So, you know, I guess you just have to kind of work through that. The other part to that is, you know, there are staff members that come to the meetings and will, you know, sit in them or watch, or they'll watch a certain piece of it, and you probably have a little less of that, because they're not gonna make the, you know, to come all the way down, you know, for that. So I guess that'd be my response.
Could I, could I follow up to that, then? And was that, there were two parts of the question?
I'm sorry, yeah. And on the second part of it, to the extent that the, the, the space that's, that's, you know, that is more elevated at the county, you know, we've looked at that, that's not big enough for, you know, all 13 of us to be able to sit up there. So I guess there'd have to be some discussion and thought in terms of how, you know, how would you lay that out, and what would the seating arrangement be, and, and would there be anybody up at the, at the upper part, or nobody, and if so, who's up there and how? And I mean, you'd have, we'd have to work through all of those kinds of issues. But we have looked at it and determined we cannot fit either all 11 or all 13 up on the, up on the higher part.
And a follow-up?
So my, my follow-up, kind of my personal summarization would be, I, I really appreciate having worked somewhere where your work is happening during a reconstruction. It's very stressful, even when you're being taken care of. So that the more that we can do to support the staff in this particular year of transition would be great, because that allows us then, as the council, to really focus on supporting the public. I think we can do a lot to problem solve that part, but I, I would really like to support the, I would not support the motion, because I, I just think that the staff will be most impacted by this transition.
Okay. And Councilmember Jean?
Thank you. I do appreciate that you put a new amendment to move all the city council to. Eau Claire County, I'm not sure, I, I work at Eau Claire Counties. Parking has been a big issue with, out there, and snow days could be very tough. For a car, you probably won't find any spots out there to park. And, I don't know, I just don't feel comfortable to, to have a meeting out there, because I'm working out there. I don't know if they're gonna let me, I don't know, I just not feel, I don't know, it's just gonna feel awkward for me to hold a meeting out there, meeting and working out there, just, just my thought. But, well, I'm hoping that they can find a better way to go out there and get citizens to the new place. But like I say, I'm just kinda a little awkward, kinda weird for me to have a meeting at my, my employment. Thank you.
Councilmember Greggert?
Thank you, Council President. I, I've had jobs in the past where I've had to be completely moved out of the main building that I, that I was really intended to be housed in long-term. And when I worked at UW-Stout, when the student center was being renovated, we had the involvement and leadership division of the Memorial Student Center actually moved to Main Street. So it was a very, you know, it actually moved it to the very center of town, across from the Mabel Tainer Theater. And it was, I mean, it was, there's ways for these moves to actually be quite a, a good experience and, and really open one's eyes to different perspectives, and, and open ourselves up to the community and keep ourselves open. So, you know, that, I'm open-minded to this, this, this meeting location for the city council. I think as, as a council, we need to look at what is best for our body. I, I'm on the Transit Commission, too, and we, and we discussed at our meeting that we would like to meet downtown. We haven't identified a location yet, but I think each commission should have that discussion and should, should figure out what is best for them. And our city council, I feel, can do the same. There may be budget implications of, of those decisions, but I, I think we have some wiggle room if we go with, with this former 3M property, to be able to, to make sure that all of our commission members and, and are comfortable, and keeping in mind the, the public's access to, to their meetings. And, you know, I'll be serving on, on plan commission, so I'm, I, you know, that's another two meetings a month, so I'm gonna be concerned about where we, where we meet. And as someone who lives without a car, it's gonna be, I'm gonna be advocating for a place that is accessible for me. Another thing to keep in mind is that our staff are really quite dispersed around the community, and that, I think that's a strength of ours. We have several department heads that are in the room that actually are housed in the county building. So, so it will, it would shift as to where staff would have to go to for the meetings, but potentially not as, as much as, as if it were, if they were located up on Prairie Lane. So, so I, I think I can support this amendment, because it's what I feel as a council member would be a benefit to our, to our work as a council. So, thank you.
And Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Madam President. I really appreciated this discussion, and I've heard such thoughtful remarks, and it reminds me of a, of a handout that Mr. City Manager gave to me, which said, was talking about how the role of the council was to think about the why, and the role of the city staff was to think about the how. And I think this is a challenging question, because it kind of touches on both the why and the how. For me, I've spent most of my adult life living without a car, which means that I've spent lots of time walking that extra half mile to a mile through the snow that the bus doesn't cover in various cities. And that's, it's something that I, I only did in cases where I had to do it. And so I think about how I first started getting involved in city issues and coming to council meetings. There was an issue I was passionate about, and I came down and I, I spoke my mind, it was the first time I spoke, it was about a year or two ago. And it was such a powerful experience to me to actually be in the room with decision-makers, to be able to look people in the eye and talk with them, and have them hear my voice. And that was just a great experience for me. And I know that if it had been a situation where I had to take a bus and then walk a really long way through the snow, or take a bus and figure out how to do a shuttle, that might have been a barrier for me, because I was already kind of unsure of what to expect or what that experience would be like. And so my decision in supporting this motion will be made, because I really wanna make sure that everybody can have that experience of, of easily connecting with their local leaders and having that be accessible to people who don't have cars. So that's my perspective on this issue. Thank you.
And any further discussion? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you. I have heard from the public regarding this issue, and all that I've heard is about accessibility, and there are concerns about that. So I'm leaning towards supporting this amendment, just because that's what I've heard, there's those concerns. I think Mr. Solberg's got a great idea with, with the idea of keeping things, the services downtown here. Like, I've heard about voting, people are concerned about access to voting, and then parking tickets and such that he outlined, and so I think that's a great compromise. But I also think access to public meetings is very important, and to make it easy for people to attend, which, to keep it downtown on the, on the, it's walkable for some, or you can take the bus as well. So, thank you.
And there being no further discussion, our vote now is on the motion to amend, which you have a copy of in front of you, Madam City Clerk. And I vote passes the motion. Councilmember Strobel?
No.
Weld?
No.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
No.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
No.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Greggert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
No.
And that motion passes six to five. So we're back to the resolution on page 84 as amended. Further discussion on the resolution? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I have, I think, an operational question. I'm not sure that I would make a motion on it tonight, but I would like to see if I can talk to, with the city manager a little bit more about essentially a policy that would help any reimbursement for employees who took their employment here at the city, and then for a temporary time needed to go out to the, this building, if there could be any reimbursement for that. So that would be the nature of my question.
That would not be something that we'd be looking to explore, in that I think it'd be very complicated with 90 employees. And again, as I stated last night, you know, some will actually see a reduction in the amount of travel that they have to, to, you know, to, to get to the site. So trying to figure out, you know, exactly, you know, what, what that would mean and how you'd calculate it, I think would be challenging, and certainly would not, I guess not certainly, but it would be something that we would not be looking to explore. I mean, you're talking about five miles, you know, and I think that's gonna go a lot of different ways. I mean, I've, I've talked to some people that live close to City Hall right now, and they're actually excited to say, well, that's a long enough distance that might make it worthwhile trying to bike to work, whereas a mile and a half wasn't, wasn't worth, you know, trying to bike to work, you know, with suits and all that sort of thing. So I think you'll see a variety of different transportation modes and, and times, and to try to calculate out who has a net increase or a net loss, and, and is, is something we certainly were, we were not looking to explore.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you. As a follow-up, I guess what I'd be looking at is something that's not necessarily a reimbursement for everybody, it's for those who might have newfound hardship for getting there. So right now, when anybody took employment who was located here at City Hall, the safe assumption was they could always take the bus to work. And now that's not the assumption. They couldn't always take the bus to the new location. So... not the assumption, they couldn't always take the bus to the new location, so maybe you have some thoughts about it.
We're not aware of anybody, any employees that have that situation, and if we did have an employee that had that specific situation, we would be open to having some conversations and discussions with them.
Thank you, Madam President, so that really is what I'm looking at, is just if there's any kind of outlier situations that come up, you know, I was thinking even yesterday, let's say, an employee is in a committed relationship, their partner brings them to work, and then there was a ending of that relationship, and all of a sudden the person working at the city didn't have a ride anymore, you know, what would happen then, so I guess maybe this could be something, if you'd be willing to, to communicate with the council at some point in time of internally how staff can just make sure that any barrier that would be encountered could be decreased, and if you think that's doable, then I'm very willing to just let that be that and know that any outlier situations would be taken care of.
Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you, well, the majority of the council made a decision they want to stay downtown, I'm not sure how that amendment works if the county board office is not necessarily available, but I guess what I'm thinking here is, I don't like the county boardroom too much, but I could support trying to maybe give staff direction to find a suitable downtown location to hold the council meetings, and so I thought about offering a postponement, if fellow council members would be interested in that, to give staff direction to come back with options to hold council meetings downtown, because I can think of sort of a lot of other spaces, if the parameters have now changed in the search, where we might have some viable options, maybe other than the county boardroom, so I guess I'll put that motion out there, and we'll see how it goes, because I always talk about it before I do, and I know that, so.
So your motion is to, well, let's see, we already passed a motion to hold council meetings in the county board office, so we would now, I guess we'd have to, we can't really amend that motion anymore, I'm not sure how we can have competing motions, since we already passed one, what do you think, Mr. Hofer?
Well, an amendment has been approved on an underlying item, until the underlying item is approved, further amendments would be in order, and so...
Even if they compete with the amendment we just passed?
Yes.
Okay.
Because essentially, you know, for example, if you've approved the amendment, if you decided to postpone the whole item, the amendment would have no force, just as one example, and so until the underlying item is voted on, any amendments, even if there is some sort of contradiction, would be in order.
So is your motion to postpone?
So the motion could include that, actually, the motion would be to postpone to give staff direction to find, to come back to council with potential options for downtown council meetings, and that could include the county boardroom.
So I think the motion is to postpone action to give staff time to find and present other alternative downtown locations for council meetings, does that sound like what you, no, does that sound like what you said?
Um, yes.
Okay, so is there a second to that motion? A second?
Can I get a clarification?
Sure.
Can we approve the, can we still approve the lease for the 3M building and keep the council meeting decision or discussion separate, so that the staff and city can start to plan and prepare for at least that portion of what's on the agenda, or does it have to all stay together now?
Councilmember Strobel?
It would be my understanding, and I should postpone it to a time certain, like, say, two weeks, but it would be my understanding that the whole motion would not go forward until they came back with options to hold council meetings downtown, and then we could revisit the office space lease there, and it would be also my hope that if that was factoring into their decision making on that office space, that they needed it to have council chambers there, and now they're not, if they had other viable options, it might be a less expensive alternative, that maybe that would allow them to explore those as well, that was my thought, so.
The motion still seeks a second, or, the motion does still postpone the action to give staff time to find alternative downtown locations for council meetings.
One more verification?
Oh, uh-huh.
Thank you, Council President.
Sure.
And I think I understood Mr. Solberg's state that two weeks would be enough, we would still be okay as far as signing a lease, if we had to delay two weeks?
Yeah, as far as our move out there in July, two weeks wouldn't affect that, and I'm not aware of anything in the lease that has a date that this needs to be signed tomorrow by the City Manager.
Okay, thank you.
The motion?
I would second.
Okay, second, it may Councilmember Weld, discussion is in order on the motion to, the second motion to amend. Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Madam President, maybe this is a clarification with Mr. Strobel, and then perhaps a follow-up with Mr. Solberg, if that would be allowed, so if I understand your motion correctly, it's to postpone the whole kit and caboodle, okay, so, and is your intention then to also see if there's another spot for all of city operations downtown?
That would be my hope, is if there, I mean, certainly, I think that staff probably has investigated much, but, you know, they had the parameters when they were looking for this other space, that they wanted space that they could use for city council chambers, now they don't, that's probably another couple thousand square feet, is there another viable office location within the, a different location, might be less expensive, that would now work as long as we have, as a body, decided that we want council meetings downtown, so, I mean, in two weeks, they might come back and say, no, there isn't, but that would be my hope.
Mr. Solberg?
When we were looking for office space early on, having council meetings in the office was a consideration that we looked for, we did consider spots, we looked at the US Bank Building, possible Bank Mutual, Seven Cell Dewey, to try and find a location downtown that had adequate space for staff without the council meeting, when we were looking at the county board meeting, there is not a lot of space in the downtown area where we can house all of city staff without going into two locations, that was a problem we ran into.
My motion is not to have city staff be downtown, but just to look at other viable options, that the council, my understanding, was wanted to have their meetings downtown.
Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Madam President, if I could maybe clarify again with Councilmember Strobel, and then I can ask, I think, I think, I heard just a moment ago that, yes, looking at all of the operations downtown again, that's not your intention, okay, so then, if I may ask a question of Mr. Solberg, I'm gonna get it, is there a snowball's chance in April? That a location could be found, and if, and I guess related to that is, is a city, is it possible to even look at multiple locations, let's say twenty people here, thirty people there, thirty people somewhere else, is that a possibility?
We didn't want to segment staff, to have, you know, finances in the US Bank Building, engineering is over at Seven Cell Dewey, we were able to find smaller aggregate groups of office space scattered throughout downtown, but not enough for everybody, so that was of utmost importance to at least keep staff together, it was an extra incentive if we were able to host the meetings also, because we did explore the county boardroom, both the current and the former county boardroom at the county courthouse, thought about the Conflor, the Pablo Center for the Arts, is that going to be possible, but to request four nights a week for, or a month for a whole year, seemed a little bit like a big ask for that without, you know, without paying, you know, market rate for that, we looked at potentially, you know, RCU, we held our comprehensive plan update at RCU, that room isn't quite set up the same, and to have a permanent council platform at there wasn't viable, looked at, you know, possibly medical facilities, but we didn't want to look like, you know, similar schools, picking one school over another, do we have, you know, reach out to Regis to have, you know, the council meetings in an auditorium setting for the whole time, but then what about North or Memorial and the location for that, so we tried to find sites that were neutral for it and in close proximity to downtown, if you were going to be in the downtown area, you know, using the county facilities, the form, previous board meeting room was most ideal set up for going in and having meetings that feel like we have here, that's going to be undergoing renovations, although if they were to be delayed, which is one thing that they're looking at, they're looking at converting that room into a new judge, judge's chamber, if that were to be delayed past when we would move out, that would be an option there, but really, the two, if you were looking at downtown, the two most viable are the former and the county board locations, albeit the current county boardroom is not set up with the same kind of feel that you would have here with that, so the school board meets the same time that, you know, they have conflicts with council meetings and plan and commission meetings, so that wasn't an option, we're pretty limited in the downtown area for facilities that would be, we considered the library, the downstairs of the library has a large meeting room, but then that is out of commission for other events at the library, so it was a challenge, not only finding office space, but also finding space to host meetings at a consistent location the whole time, so, a snowball in April before this year, I may have had a different comment on that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg, Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Council President, I seconded the motion, again, with the idea that, yeah, if we can get two weeks, and maybe there's a better location for that council chamber than the county boardroom, I think ideally that, to me, makes it worth waiting those two weeks, I still think that if we can find an environment such as we've had for years and years, and what we have now, I think that it's worth that, and if the old county chamber room would all of a sudden open up, and they'll agree to delay that a year, then that, to me, sounds like a perfect room for what we want to accomplish as a council, as a body.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President, I don't think I'll be supporting this motion, and it's a little confusing to me, but, I mean, we had seen in a letter from city staff that they explored downtown options, and we just heard Mr. Solberg go over them, again, it says in our letter, we explored downtown options for holding council meetings, and essentially comes around to say at the end, while the O'Clough County Boardroom would be the best place, there, it's not configured correctly, and so, you know, are we gonna listen to staff and what their recommendation is for downtown meeting options?
Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you, and I just feel like the job of the council is to give direction to staff, and then to have staff come back to us with the options, and so rather than us necessarily picking a specific spot, I don't, I think this is the first time we've been giving them direction that we do want to have council meetings in this area, so that would be my intention, and if they came back with just the one viable option, I don't think two weeks hurts us too bad, so.
There being no further discussion on the motion to amend, Clerk, please call the roll, and I vote would postpone our decision for two weeks and order staff to find and report other alternative locations for downtown, for council meetings.
Council President, I just want to clarify, if I'm understanding correctly, I don't know that this is a motion to amend, but rather a motion to postpone action?
Oh, I said amend?
Yes, okay.
Whoops, I meant a motion to postpone.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
No.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
Beaton?
No.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
No.
Gregert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
No.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that motion passes six to five, we shall take up this item in two weeks from tonight, as amended, let's see, yeah, and that brings us to the last item on our business agenda is a resolution appointing an alternate council member to the Eau Claire Area Economic Development Summit Strategy Action Task Force, Councilmember Emmanuel requested this item, and she speaks to the item, now?
Thank you, Madam President, to give a little bit of a perspective, the city has been looking at creative partnerships with other entities that are committed to economic development in our community at large, as we all know, there's dwindling resources in just about every sector, so how can we do, how can we be more strategic with what we have, and so the city was invited to participate under the leadership of the county administrator on looking at economic task force, and the meeting, the first meeting that they're going to have got rescheduled to a date where I need to attend out of state for work, so I didn't want council to be not represented, so I worked with staff to bring this to the body's attention and to ask if somebody would be willing to, I originally asked to basically sub for me next week, but as I understand, it's written as a standing alternate, so in the event that I couldn't attend a future meeting, this alternate could step in, I don't anticipate that will be the case, but nonetheless, I think it's very important for us to have at least one council member represented, if I understand correctly, two staff members will be there as well, Mr. Peters is invited, as is Mr. Schott.
The chair will then seek a volunteer, it's a bit of a casual way to do it, but a volunteer to serve as the, what was it, permanent alternate, or what is it?
Alternate council member.
There was some other word you used.
Standing.
Oh, standing alternate, okay, is anyone interested in doing that, Councilmember Weld, is your light on?
Sorry.
Your light is on, but...
May I nominate somebody?
Just one second, is anyone interested? Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Council President, I did have a question for Councilmember Emmanuel, if that's okay, what time is the meeting at, and what is the duration of the meeting?
Thank you, Madam President, this meeting will be on Monday, April 30th, I believe, from eight AM till at least three in the afternoon, so it's an all-day commitment.
I have a follow-up, and what is the location of the meeting?
I apologize, I believe the original one was at the Chippewa Valley Airport, Mr. Peters, would you know, is it rescheduled there, okay, Chippewa Valley Airport.
Okay, thank you.
So with a few more details, is anyone interested in serving as the alternate?
Madam President? I'm available for that time, I'd be happy to do that.
I think you're it, though we do need a motion, I don't have the resolution in front of me today for some various reasons.
I'll move.
Is there a resolution in our packet?
Yeah, it's blank line.
Oh, fill in the blank type thing, okay, then on the resolution to appoint a standing alternate, the chair would seek a motion to fill in the blank with the name of Councilmember Jill Christopherson.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Second, it may Councilmember Worthman, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and then Clerk, please call the roll on the resolution. And then clerk, please call the roll on the resolution.
Madam President.
Oh, Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to speak to Councilmember Christopherson's service. I had reached out to her to put a bug in her ear to think about this. And as we look at economic development, one of the things I think is really incumbent upon everyone is to think about economic development in a holistic manner. And Councilmember Christopherson has done a significant amount of work around poverty in our community. And I think about when we think of lifting ourselves up in the community that we've got to make sure that we're remembering all income levels because indeed as we build wealth, we want to build wealth for more people in our community. So, that's why I reached out to you. I think you'll do a great job and I'm very grateful that you're willing to serve. So thank you.
And Madam Clerk, on the resolution. Oh. We're around to Councilmember Emanuel and Strobel. Thank you. And then the roll.
Councilmember Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We have one ordinance for action tonight, an ordinance rezoning property located on the west side of Star Avenue, south of Seymour from C2 to R3P. Questions of staff from our presentation last night? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. This is a question for Mr. Petrie. Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to follow up with a couple things, I think just to get an understanding that this rezoning is something that you are recommending, but that the planning commission after the vote is not recommending. Is that correct?
Not really. The staff is bringing fact, all the facts forward.
Okay.
We're not recommending for or against, that's the council decision. The planning commission voted again three, three, two. So three for, three against and two abstaining.
Sure. If I may ask a follow-up. Was there, was there, I'm, I'm assuming that the neighbors were all notified and we have a policy to do that. Was, was really the only opposition, the neighbor that we've been hearing from and that the petition?
That is correct. So state law requires within 300 feet to be notified of the property.
Yeah.
And one member of the, adjacent, adjoining property was in opposition of the request to the cell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie. Oh, Council, uh, number Gregor.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Petrie, do you mind bringing up a, an, a view of this, of the general development plan, please? Thank you. So I'm, I'm familiar with our, we do have a, I know that, I realize this is not a site plan and it's kind of an earlier version of, of what this property could be. But we have a site, in our site plan ordinance, we have a, a section pedestrian and bicycle access and circulation standards. So I have some concerns about, you know, it may be due to the, the size of this property not really being appropriate for a development like this, but the, there's only, so I asked last night about how many doors are accessible directly from a side, the public sidewalk and it was, or I observed that it was four of the 12 doors and each of those doors, each of the 12 doors leads to an individual unit. And so, my, one of my concerns here is related to the general development plan specifically and where it's, it's, it looks like the, it looks like you really couldn't walk, like without going through a lot of parking area to eight of the 12 apartments. And I'm wondering if you feel like this would have to be changed significantly in order to comply with our site plan requirements in the, as it gets developed into a site plan?
That's a good question. So, this is a general development plan for a 12-unit apartment. The elevation shown is correct. You are, four doors will be facing Seymour, or stop, Star Avenue. Four will be facing west, which would be towards the railroad and vacant land. And the other eight would be on the sides, forward to the north and forward to the south, is my understanding. Now, he will have to be required to put sidewalk connection in from those doors. Some of them may not be feasible and the planning commission will review the final site plan at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie.
Council President. Oh, Councilmember Bergy.
I have a question. So I, I watched the planning commission this morning when they talked about this and they, I just wanted to clarify. Someone brought up that there, in the city plan, you need two acres for residential zoning and this was only a little over one acre. Is that, or if you can clarify that for me, please?
That was a question. I can't find it at the moment in the ordinance. However, council does have the authority to approve this as a planned development, which the P, that's what the P stands for. I believe it's in the planned development section. Unfortunately, I cannot find it at this time.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for the last time. And on a motion, as we go around, an motion by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Weld. The ordinance is moved and discussion is in order. Councilmember Strobel.
Thank you. I, I'm going to support this. Because it's, it's really a rezoning, it's, it's just a general development plan, it's not a site plan yet. So we're really being asked just to rezone this from commercial to R3P. And I think as a city, we like infill development. I, I really like infill development. We've already got our infrastructure paid for and, and we get the benefit of the property taxes on this new development within something, it, it helps us avoid urban sprawl. And so anytime we see one of these, I, I like to try to support it. It'll still have to go back to the planning commission for a site plan and I think we heard the developer say that he's willing to change things. And, and so we'll have, and we'll have another look at that. Right now, we're just being asked to rezone it. We, we did have one person in opposition to it as, as Councilmember Worthman spoke to, but there are many other, other homes around there that we didn't hear from. That land has been vacant for well over 30 years. And, you know, the clinic doesn't want it. It was apparently originally supposed to be part of the clinic and, and they don't want it. It's adjoining R2 properties, so it's not adjoining R1 properties right now. It has industrial buildings kind of kitty-corner from it there. Sort of, I would call it a sort of a, not that nice-looking medical building. And then only about 500 feet up Star Avenue, you have brand-new storage sheds. So, even with a commercial zoning, things could be put there that the neighbor might not want. You know, you could have a convenience store there or you could have some other commercial exposures. So, I think that the developer, they, the planning commission worked with them, they put the garages to the back and I think they could probably work with them a little bit more on the site plan. But I, I think it's a good infill development and something's going to happen probably on that lot at some time. So I think probably, to be honest, this building I saw is probably one of the nicer buildings in that area.
Well.
Thank you, Council President. I will support it as well. I, I think it's, again, going back to what Councilmember Strobel mentioned, this isn't about the site plan, this isn't about the size of this building, which may or may not be too big. It's, it's about rezoning going from commercial to residential. And I think it's the perfect segue from R2 to commercial, to have the R3 in the middle there so that we are still residential next to residential. And I, I think that, you know, the, the applicant's comments about rent are, are important as well. Again, on my side of, of my daily life, it's, it's seeing a lot of new construction for, for apartments and housing. But, but as was mentioned last night, a, a lot of those are 12, 15, 17, $1,800 a month and really getting to the point where it's, it's just not affordable. And so that area, I think, would be more, better suited with, with that transitioning of, of multifamily and hopefully affordable, affordable housing. And then again, we'll address the, the concerns that the commission had and such with the site. So I will support.
And there being no, Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, Council President. I, I am going to have my first planning commission meeting on Monday, so. I think, you know, this is definitely a good test for, for me in terms of, you know, that my role as a council member as well as a future planning commissioner. And, you know, there's a lot of terminology here that may be new to some council members too. And, you know, I think one of the key words that I heard from other council members is transitional and we, it is a very unique part of town where there are a lot of different types of zoning. And perhaps, Mr. Petrie, if you, if you have the zoning map, that's color-coded, that would be appreciated, although it might not be something you have.
I don't have it color-coded, but I do have it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I, you know, the transitional idea that, you know, we're going from R2 to R3P to commercial is, is an important point here and there are a lot of, there are a lot of different types of zoning out there. And it is a relatively, you know, the, this would be one of the newer buildings in the area, for sure. And the idea of infill development is, is appealing to me too. And the need for more housing and housing that is, that is within means for more people. And the fact that it's been vacant for a long time. So I'm, I'm inclined to support it. I do definitely have concerns, I think, that are shared by staff. So I'm hoping we can, so I'm hoping we can follow staff's recommendation on the, on the distances that were discussed there too. Just some thoughts. Thank you.
And Councilmember Bergy.
Well, I, from, for the zone, I know we're voting just on the zoning and that goes back to the acre. It seems like it's not, the acre wasn't the size of the building, it was the size of the land, unless I'm wrong, then feel free to correct me. But sort of zoning, to have a zoning for residential, you need two acres and yet there is really only one acre. So you're going to correct me. That's good.
I found it. I was on the right page, but I do apologize. Let me zoom in. It's under I. Minimum project size. Minimum project size for residential plan development shall be two acres. However, though, the city council may waive that provision.
Thank you. Can I continue? So, but the baseline is that, that's what they want. And then that, where I'm thinking, and the planning commission did not pass it, so that's also weighing on my, in my head as well. So, something I'm thinking about. Thanks.
Councilmember Strobel.
I might add that I, I think planning commission probably would have, but two people had to abstain because I, I don't even think they had a financial interest in it, but I think one of them worked for the landowner and the other one had a, was a banker, so.
Abstentions are difficult to interpret and should be done so very carefully. As Councilmember Strobel indicated. Okay. Ready? There being no further discussion then, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
No.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. We have one ordinance for introduction, which is my responsibility to read into the record, it being an ordinance rezoning property on the north and south sides of Normandale Road from TR1A to R2P. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up this introduced ordinance? I see no such desire, meaning announcements are in order. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam President. Several tonight. First off, tomorrow night is a tour of the Pablo Confluence Arts Center at 5:00 and you're all encouraged to join us. If you have not seen that facility or seen it recently, I think you'll be impressed with the development that's been happening there. So 5:00 tomorrow at the Pablo Center. On Thursday then, bright and early in the morning, is the Leadership Eau Claire event for the future of passenger rail. And if you haven't signed up for that and would like to, please contact Kathy. And then Thursday night, at 5:15, is the Eau Claire Communities Annual Celebration and Health Equity Workshop. And so again, hopefully you're able to make that and you can let Kathy know. Saturday, May 5th, is the Amazing Eau Claire Cleanup and volunteer opportunities await you there. And then on Friday, the 11th, is the Local Government 101 Workshop that's being conducted by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. And again, if you'd like to participate in that, please contact Kathy. And then finally, on Friday, May 18th, at the Eggs and Issues, it's hosted by the chambers, our very own Finance Director, Mr. Winsens, will be putting on a very informative discussion on TIFs and other financing facts about municipal finance. And so I would encourage you to apply and, or not apply, but to, to sign up for that, that presentation by Mr. Winsens.
Any announcements by council members? On a motion then by Councilmember Jean, seconded by Councilmember Worthman, we adjourn without objection.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.